And now we have the weather and some recipes. This is the most tasteful planning board meeting they've had in a long time. So now we have two hands up. Is there anyone that we recognize and is it an illegitimate?
Yeah, yeah, I feel like that was it. Great, thank you.
Wonderful. So I'll start that again for those that may not have been able to hear us. I'm Ann Block, Chair of the Planning Board. And funding all members present this evening, they call this meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations. It's also being reported. All materials are available on our website at needmma.gov. The first item in our agenda is a public hearing for major project site plan. Special permit number two thousand nine dash zero six. With the Needham Farmers Market Inc. as petitioner. Effectively to return its Sunday market from June through October to the town common. And before we begin, I'd like to ask for a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing.
So move.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie. Any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. I'd like to invite Jeff Freeman, the President of the Needham Farmers Market. Up to the table.
Thank you.
And as you settle in. I'll just identify for the record the following comments and materials we've received. From town departments and perhaps others. A fully executed license agreement between the petitioner and the town of Needham. Letters from Jeff Freeman, the President of the Needham Farmers Market dated January twelfth and February eleventh. We received by email. A note from Ed Olson, our Director of Parks and Forestry noting. A date of January twenty five, no issues. We received an email by Police Chief John Schlittler. Dated January twenty six, affirming. That parking ordinances near the common will be enforced. As usual practice. From a building commissioner, from building commissioner to. On deck by email dated February twenty one noting that if. Portable toilets are. The closed, at least one must be accessible to persons with a disability. And corresponding email from Jeff. The President of the Farmers Market. Dated February twenty one stating that the Farmers Market will have no portable toilets on site. By email dated February twenty one from Fire Chief Tom Conroy, no issues. By email dated February twenty one from the Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gurge. With a list of requirements relating to food handling and sanitation. Which we anticipate incorporating into our decision. When we come to it and we'll ask you some questions on that. By email dated February twenty one from Justin Savigno. The Assistant Town Engineer with no comment or objection. And finally, we have a couple of letters, one. Very recently, I don't have the exact date from the Y. And also a letter from Bagel's Best Restaurant. Both of the Health Department confirming the vendors and attendees. Of the Farmers Market are welcome to use the restaurant. Bathroom facilities. We'll come to that a little later. Jeff, I'm going to ask you if you could state your. Name and address. Sorry, rather, your name and your capacity here with the Farmers Market.
Jeff Friedman. I'm President of Needham Farmers Market.
Excellent. Would you like to walk us through?
Sure, I just want to make sure I had sent a letter in. Dated February eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Is that included in the record?
That's included. Excellent. Thank you. Good evening, as you probably already know, my name is Jeff Friedman. I'm President of Needham Farmers Market. For its thirteenth season, NFM is applying for a special permit. To return to Garrity's Way in a small part of the town common. That is, we call, I call the site. Needham, NFM has operated for five years at the same location. Years twenty seventeen through twenty twenty one. The application would further amend previous special permits for this site. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty one. Due to the renovation of the town common, NFM relocated. For two years, twenty twenty two and two twenty twenty three, to Greensfield. Now that renovation is completed. NF, NFM will be returning to the town common and Garrity's Way. Prior to twenty seventeen. NFM was located at the Eaton Square Municipal Parking Lot for three years. So NFM was located on town land for a total of ten years. With license agreements by the Office of Town Manager. Throughout. NFM will sell fresh and local produce. Baked goods and other healthy food to the Needham. Community. NFM fully complies with all Board of Health requirements. Since its first required first markup. In twenty twelve, including two years on the front lawn of First Parish Church. Food and health safety is of paramount importance. As well as safety in general at NFM. For twenty twenty four, the Town Manager signed. A license agreement with NFM dated January ten, twenty. January tenth, twenty twenty four, which details specific requirements. NFM will fully comply with this and all town requirements. As stated. Generally, as stated in the license agreement and pre and special permits. About eight years ago, the Select Board voted five to nothing. To allow NFM to use Garrity's Way and the common. Mary Ann Cooley, current. Select Board Chair fully supports the market. From eight years ago when she was Vice Chair of the Select Board up through now. For its contributions to make Needham. A great place to live. This includes providing fresh and local healthy food to eat. Live music from local musicians. Local artists and a community table. For Needham nonprofits. NFM's layout plan for twenty twenty four, this was Exhibit A to the application and also to the license agreement. Is approximately the same as NFM's layout diagram for twenty twenty. This, this, the twenty twenty layout diagram. Is attached to my February eleventh letter to the Board involving temporary parking for vendors. The difference between the two NFM layouts for twenty twenty four. And twenty twenty are the following. The maximum number of food vendors per market is increased to seventeen from thirteen. The maximum number of artists per market is increased to four from two. And at least seventy-five percent of all vendors must sell fresh and local food. Which was a permit requirement at Greensfield. NFM will be open for business from eleven to three P M. With setup starting at nine A M. We request that the breakout. Breakdown time. Be two hours long, three to five P M. Is allowed in the twenty twenty four license agreement. And in every previous special permit. The current application states of one hour breakdown. From three to four P M, which was a mistake in oversight. It takes five vendors up to two hours during breakdown to reload unsold produce, tents. Tables and to clean up. NFM requests that the special permit allow breakdown from three to five P M. During its previous ten seasons that NFM has operated on town land. It has worked closely with the staff of the Office of Town Manager. Who consult with staff in the various town departments. The Town Manager's Office issues new license agreements as it sees appropriate. The pro, the proposal is for the Planning Board to authorize the permit. And for annual renewals to go through the Office of Town Manager. NFM requests waiver of the filing fee as it has been granted before by the Board. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Actually, before we, I go to my colleagues, I'm. Curious, is there anyone in the room, as a public hearing, there's an opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak on this application? I see no one with their hands up here. Alex. Can we bring over the attendees? And we'll wait a second, is there anyone? In the audience at home on Zoom that would like to put their hand up to speak to the application? We'll give this a minute or so. But I don't see any hands up, so. Gene, it looked like, I had some comments too, but. Looked like you were a little more enthusiastic than I was, so I'm gonna.
I don't know about that, but. I want to ask Mr. Friedman if he has reviewed the comments of Tara Gurge.
Yes.
And do you have any difficulty in complying with?
No, not at all. It's been discussed with my Board. Fully.
And the bathroom facilities that are authored are right down Vegas Best, which is right across the street. Right. The Orme of the Mitchell Three generally. And at the Y M C A. And it was suggested that the Y M C A is a far walk. I don't personally see a problem with that, but what are your thoughts on that issue?
Okay, well, first of all. One of the, one of the. Establishments in Needham, which our vendors do go. Is to Walgreens Pharmacy. And I've talked, I talked years ago to the manager and he had no problem working for the vendors. Later on, I had asked him about the possibility of getting that in writing. And because Walgreens is owned out of state. He had some problems, some trepidation about doing it. So that's, I know that's doable and I've used the facilities there myself. There are. Two other possibilities. In terms of, you know, restroom facilities being freely available. One is at CVS, which I can know from personal experience. And the other one would be at Hearth Pizzeria. And I was just actually there. About an hour ago to see if they would agree, you know, as you might know already. Hearth is very community oriented, locally, I think it's locally owned and. They're, they contribute to many local community groups, nonprofits. So I went in and the person who was in, by the way, the restaurant was completely filled. Parking was at a premium. But anyways, they're around there, but so I was told that. I should contact the owner, his name is Ivan.
Yes.
So that, so I can't remember his email, so, yeah.
Okay, so. Sounds like you haven't reached out to him yet. So that you're endeavoring to maintain compliance with. The requirements of the Health Department, which is to have accessible facilities. Lee, why, why is that a requirement of a Farmers Market?
Because the people who are working at the Farmers Market need to have a place to use the facilities. And then they have to have a place to wash their hands before they come back and sell.
Yes, that part, the second part certainly makes sense. Okay. I'm sorry, Gene, did you have additional questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. To Gene's point, I think the letters. You know, that you've already obtained. Show approval. Up until three o'clock, not for the strike period between three and five.
No, no, all that's required is during the business hours.
I think actually she said. Between the setup hours. And the hours of the pharmacy and the hours. Of the. Take down.
Who are you referring to here?
I wasn't aware of that. Let me take, it was never that. It was always the hours.
I see that the letter from the Y says eleven to three, but they probably would be fine.
Oh, no, they would be open till five or whatever.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't want to dwell on this issue.
Right.
I'm just stating it technically.
Yeah.
And I would, and you, you know, it's not to satisfy us directly.
I understand.
To satisfy the Health Department. And for a very valid reason with food handling and so on. And so I think that, you know, you just have to ensure satisfaction. You may need to update the two letters and maybe obtain others.
Right.
Where we will, you should know that we'll have a condition.
Right.
That will say you're required to satisfy the Health Department, which we already have anyways, so.
If I could just, I mean, we will do whatever the Health Department wants us to do. That's a given.
Sure.
But just to explain the rationale. With the heart, with the requirement, and as I, at least in previous years always, was during the business hours. So that you're correct, it's in terms of the use of hand washing. For the public. In involving business hours. And there's nothing after three o'clock, nothing will be sold. So there's no handling of food during business hours.
After business hours.
I'm looking at Tara Gurge's email. Her email states that. She's looking for, the Health Department is looking for. All hours that the market is open to the public.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's for business.
To three P M. That's it. Three P M.
Okay.
Is that, as long as they're, again, as long as they're satisfied. I, and I understand, and I understand the rationale. The other note that I just wanted to make was. It, in the, in the license agreement in paragraph one point H. It talks about there may be a period of suspension in which case if there was some activity happening at Town Common.
Yeah.
And you're required to change locations.
I understand.
I think, Lee, how would we address that in a special term? Do we need, do we need a new special permit if? They needed to go back, let's say. You know, it goes from June through October. And in mid-July. It's, Town Common is not allowed, we have, you know, a site, I'm special permit, major project special permit. For the one location. If they're moved to another location, do we need another permit to that subsequent location?
We need a permit to do it, right? We're not, that's not in front of us, we're only asking for permission to do it on the town common.
I understand, I understand.
That's the only permission we can grant them.
I, I, I understand, so I just want to be clear that in per one point eight of the license agreement, if you're required to.
Yes.
Move to a new facility, you'll have to come back to us.
No problem.
For another special permit.
So, and that's perfectly fine with us and we will accommodate, obviously, the town, it's in the agreement. I just would mention that just for, you know, historical note here. Is that, that, that's never come up. Which is not to say it wouldn't come up in the future.
Appreciate that.
And then I do, there is one event that I should note, which was that. It's about, well, we were on the Town Common at that time. So it was about maybe three years ago, I think. And so there's a. An Indian group in Needham, residents of Needham called Icon. Community of Needham, Icon. And for India Independence Day, which is in August. The Town Manager asked us if, you know, if we would mind. You know, allowing them during the beginning to use. You know, our facilities and also our speakers, the speakers that we had. And for their event, which we did. I mean, and we worked with them and it lasted as long as they wanted it. So and after that, we resumed the market. So what I'm trying to say is that we're very accommodating. Of the, and there is a requirement. So, you know, we will comply.
I understand. Thank you. Do any of my other colleagues have any comments or questions?
Actually, actually, I want to go.
No, I don't have any other questions.
Actually, I'm just curious. So, I mean. Fantastic thing that you guys are always accommodate and collaborate with whatever's going on, so it's fantastic. You talk about the music, I'm curious where, you know, I see a couple of spots. Where's, I mean, obviously that oval area within the new. New arrangement in the center. Will that be where the music is? And someone is like, almost like facing the lawn area type of thing? What are your thoughts for the music?
So, so this is one of the issues that will have to be worked out with DPW. But DPW, we had a meeting with DPW. So they're aware of, they had this plan. So let me explain it to you. I don't know if you've seen this. We have a couple of them. Anyways, so there is a. There are squares. And the squares are for vendors and artists. And the circles, there are two circles. And that's, there's a musical notes there, so that's intended for musicians. So, and in the past, we've always had the music from the steps. Of the Town Hall. We're at the very top, the top landing. So, any event, we thought that a natural location. Would, would all, and we've, obviously, we want to, if possible, have people. If they can, get close to the music. I know when we were on Greensfield, for example. There were many people who with their kids came to Greensfield and the kids were right there. Next to the musicians and it was great. I mean, the experienced kids would dance. And so, so we wanted to have that same atmosphere if we could. So it seemed like a natural place to have it. You know, close to the market. And yet somewhat separate from it would be the. I don't know how to describe it.
Where, 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 where a virtual gazebo would be.
Yeah, yes. So it's, it's, it's that. Just look over here and I couldn't point to it. It's that area there. You see it?
Very good.
So the details on that have yet to be worked out, but it was brought, you know, DPW was aware of it. And there is electrical access there, so we would have to work. With them, but, and I, just in terms of DPW, they've been very cooperative with us from the beginning. And when we were over at Greensfield. You know, we work with the electrician at DPW to set up the electrical out access.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a natural spot for the music.
We.
An absolutely perfect spot, that almost, that's where it's supposed to be.
Right.
As far as a. Town common goes, that's where it is.
Right.
And then people have the lawn to sit at.
Exactly.
Music is, and then obviously the market's hearing this, right? So, so hopefully everything is perfectly fine.
I would just mention that in that respect. That, you know, that location and the Farmers Market. In McGarrett's Way and the Town Common. It really will bring people not only downtown to the local businesses. But it'll give them an opportunity to see all the possibilities with the town common and to use. Renovated Town Common as a place to have their activities. It's a real sell job, I think. For that and. You know, there's an investment that was made to renovate the Town Common and. And I think it's a real, it'll be a payoff. For the town, but they have to know it's there and available and it. You know.
Jeff, Jeff, so when you're over at Greensfield, when you're. You're awesome. And when it was over at Greensfield, there was an issue with the Christian Science Church as far as the music when it started. Are you bringing, when you come back here, you bringing back the music starting a little earlier going? Bring it back to what the normal hours for the music?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to say that, you know, we're very conscious of. On the issue of sound volume and trying to control it. A fact, one fact is that many businesses downtown are closed anyways on Sunday, although I wish. More than open, many of them open, well, some of them are open for lunch. But many of the other establishments are closed. So there's no residential area near the Town Common.
So are you, are you starting, are you bringing back starting the music a little earlier then?
Well, we haven't worked that out.
I think you delayed the start.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
And that was an accommodation to the Christian Science Church, which we were happy to do. And the same thing will be do if there is a problem. You know, in terms of that, I mean, you know, we're, we're very amenable to working with. The local businesses, et cetera. So if there's an issue, we'll, we'll adjust ourselves, so it's not. And we'll obviously watch the volume, but when we were on for five years. On the Town Common Garrity's Way before, we, there was never an issue with sound volume.
Any other questions already? No, that's it. Paul, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have not really questions, but a couple of comments. First of all, on the issue of the breakdown for two hours.
Right.
License agreement states that it's two hours.
Correct.
So the only issue is that legal notice. Says one hour. This, from now, we got to. Whether it's problem with the legal notice states that the breakdown is for one hour. I've got no problem with the two hour breakdown. I think we needed to.
Right.
And now, the only other thing that I want to point out. Which I've got no problem with the special permit going forward. I, I'm just going to suggest that maybe you should go back to. Town Manager and possibly Town Council. As I'm looking at paragraph one A. Of the license agreement. It implies the area, licensed area as being Town Common. Bounded by Great Plain Avenue, Chapel Street, Gary Way and Highland Avenue. So I'm reading that as a legal description. As meaning that you don't have access to Gary. You don't have access to the. To the steps of the Town Hall, I think. And looking at the plan, which I assume was approved by the Town Manager, that, you know, it's. The intent is that you are having your vendors on Garrity Way and as you can have your musicians on the steps of Town Hall. I think, I, I think it behooves you to get that cleared off, which is probably a very simple one paragraph amendment. To this agreement for you. It also says to me just one small, small thing since. Since the licensed area is the entire Town Common. And you're responsible for. Cleaning up the licensed area during the breakdown.
Right.
That means you've got to remove all the trash in the entire Town Common, not just the area that you're using. But even the area down by Great Plain Avenue where people are leaving their trash. If they fill up the bathrooms. On the Great Plain Avenue side of Town Common or if there's litter there. By this agreement, you're responsible to clean that up.
So.
I don't, I don't know whether you want to go back to the town and. Reduce the size of the licensed area to like the northern half of the Town Common or just leave it the way it is. But I think you should definitely. And I don't think it's our problem from Planning Board.
Right.
So I've got no problem with our issuing the. Permit. But you may want to clear up the use of Gary Way. Use of the, with the steps of Town Hall.
So the license agreement is pretty, I think. The intent anyways is clear. So if you look at, do you have the license agreement with you? Take a look at page two, paragraph two, plan.
Yes, Exhibit A.
Right, that's why I said.
License, no, right. It's, it, it may be an ambiguity, but I think that it's. Barely clear that. It says that the licensee's market layout plan. Or the licensed area is attached as Exhibit A. And here's Exhibit A. And it clearly shows this area.
I'm pointing out, you're calling it an ambiguity, an ambiguity. I'm calling it a conflict. It's easily cleared up.
Raise it to your head and however you satisfy it. We're going to proceed.
And as I said, you're going to walk out of here.
Right.
We're going to issue a special permit.
Good.
And whether you take my advice or not is up to you. Our special permit isn't going to be affected. By whether you change the language here or not. I'm just pointing out the inconsistency. In the agreement. Which I think that if you went back to Town Council and said, gee, can we, can I get a letter from you? That, that just clarifies that. That Garrity Way and the steps of Town Hall. Are part of our licensed. Area.
Right.
I'm sure he would give it to you.
Anything else, Paul?
Oh, you're saying, oh, you're saying that. Garrity Way, because it's bounded by Garrity Way, that it does include Garrity Way?
That, that's right.
Okay, well, oh.
And I, I agree with Paul that even the use of the word Town Common. Make, the Town Common seems to me to be the green area. Not the Town Hall steps, not Garrity Way. I really think you need to say, you know, and Garrity Way and the steps of Town Hall in that. I really think you need to say, you know, and Garrity Way and the steps of Town Hall in that par.
I'm sure the town's intent is to let you use Garrity.
Yes.
Is obvious, yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Paul?
No. It's, you want me to have anything else?
No. It's with seven thirty, you have another hearing at seven thirty. Unless there's something critical, are you satisfied?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I will speak to, uh, the town, the town manager's office. Good. So there's Miles. Speak to Miles.
Before I make my motion, close your ear. I was just going to ask for, oh, yeah, are you satisfied that we have everything we need?
Yes.
I would also ask before, uh, is it the board would waive the life?
I have, I'll make that motion also.
Yes.
So I'll make it as one motion. No, I, 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 I'll, I'll do two motions. First, I move that we close the hearing. And second, I move that we waive the filing for the application.
So I need a second on the first. And a second on the second.
Second.
Already had, already has the second on the first. Do you have the second on the second? So that happens when lawyers draft motions. Uh, any discussion on motion one or motion two, hearing none? I'll come to the vote on motion one. All in favor of opposing the hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimously decided, uh, on the motion number two to waive the application fee for the, uh, permit. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your patience and indulgence with us, uh, and our questions and so forth. Um, is there anything else that we need at this point?
No.
You provide a great service to the town or thank you for all the hard work that goes on behind it. We know that there is hard work that goes on behind it. And thank you very kind.
Thank you. I have to mention that it's, you know, it's not just me. It's our board and of course vendors and musicians, et cetera. People who was, uh, at our community table, they're all part of. It's a community event. Thank you very much.
Thank you very kindly.
Thanks, Jeff.
This, uh, brings us to the second item in our agenda. Uh, which is a public hearing relating to zoning bylaw amendment that would create an affordable housing district, which creates certain uses and dimensional regulations in addition to a corresponding map change uh, for the new, uh, district, which includes, come on in, come on in. Have a seat, please. Um, uh, perfect timing, uh, uh, which includes the current Linden Chambers Public Housing Site. First of all, can I have a motion, please, to waive the reading and the notice of the hearing?
We're moving.
We have a motion by already and a second by Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing that I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, aye. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. I so I'm going to, uh, make a presentation momentarily. Please, sir, come on in and have a seat. Um, I I'm going to make a presentation i- in a moment. And there will be an opportunity for public participation, for public comment. Uh, that'll come up momentarily. I'll be as uh, brief as possible, but still want to be able to communicate the important, uh, elements to this. Um, and to be clear, tonight in this hearing, we're really only considering the language of the zoning bylaw change. That's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with an underlying project. We're not looking to approve a future project at all. We're only dealing with a zoning change. Uh, presumably, if the article is adopted by town meeting in May, uh, in substantially the same form as, uh, we have in our packets presently tonight. And if the Needham Housing Authority raises the financing necessary to be able to uh, do the construction work that ultimately they'd like to do. Um, uh, then we would anticipate perhaps as early as, uh, several months from now, the Housing Authority submitting an application uh, for a site plan review by the planning board, uh, which would also include another public hearing, perhaps multiple sessions of a public hearing. And again, residents and neighbors will have more opportunity, not just tonight, but when we're uh, deliberating on a specific application, there'll be a future opportunity for residents to be able to, uh, provide feedback and us, uh, and to ask questions. Um, and so, um, with that, I think what I might do is, um, first chat about the uses. With particularly, when we deal with zoning bylaw changes, we're typically dealing with two critical elements. The first element are the uses. What's allowed? There's something allowed by right, in which case they can just go directly to the building department. Or is something allowed by special permit? In which case, the applicant is required to come either before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals to get, uh, uh, to approve their application for the project. Here we have something in be- in between. What we're proposing in the zoning bylaw, uh, which was presented to us by, uh, by council to the Needham Housing Authority, um, is to allow, uh, multifamily affordable housing by right with a special permit. And again, with, with the site, with site plan review.
Site plan review.
Thank you very much for, for both of you for correcting me. So just to be clear, for those at home, the proposed use is allowed by right with a site plan review. And again, that means that they would come back to us, they would apply for a major project site plan. And then we would, um, have a public hearing, perhaps multiple sessions, and we would adjudicate the application. We would understand clearly the impacts of the development uh, onsite and elsewhere. And, uh, and, uh, subsequently deal with whatever conditions that are necessary to mitigate any adverse impacts as we deal with all other uh, uh, site plan, uh, review pro- procedures. So we're dealing with, so we're dealing with that use as allowed, as allowed by right. Um, and now what I'd like to do is, uh, share my screen. Um, and then I can go over the dimensional regulations. When I've completed the dimensional regulations, I'll then, um, uh, go into, um, the site plan review to show an interpretation based on an underlying development, how the zoning regulations would potentially be built out, how a project could be built out based on the zoning, uh, um, dimensional regulations, and then we'll be open for public comment. Um, I'm just looking for the, uh, to log into the Zoom here, um. So forgive me for a moment. So is there a technical feedback or is? Perfect. All right. So I think that's, I think that's good. Appreciate you standing by for the technical challenges, um. And then let's see if we can get this to work. Wonderful. So what we have in front of us, uh, are, um, a set of dimensional regulations that deal with, uh, the current zoning. It also deals with the existing conditions on top of the underlying zoning. Uh, what the proposed, uh, zoning changes will include, and also, uh, what the potential development underlying, uh, the zoning change would potentially support. So we've already discussed the uses. Uh, previously, uh, duplex housing was allowed and detached single family was allowed. And, uh, now we're allowing multifamily by right. And we'll be allowing specifically affordable housing. Uh, and this would be deeply affordable housing in particular. Um, I will note that there were restrictions previously. Oh, what happened there? Sorry. Uh, I just want to note that previously there were restrictions on the, on the, uh, uses which continue today that, uh, residents, uh, um, are not just, uh, looking for affordable, deeply affordable housing, but that they're all either also elderly or seniors or, uh, are disabled to, to some degree. In other words, there are restrictions on ability and, uh, and age restrictions. And the new zoning would eliminate those restrictions. So it would not be restricted by age and it would not be restricted by ability. So we'll start with the dimensional regulations and uh, the first is the lot size. Uh, the, the, uh, current district uh, has a minimum requirement of ten thousand square feet. Uh, the affordable housing district, if approved, would be, have a minimum requirement of uh, lot size of twenty thousand square feet. The area which we'll look at in a moment, the district is, uh, over four hundred and seventy thousand square feet, which is about eleven, uh, which is about eleven acres, so significantly larger than, uh, than the minimum lot size. Uh, the frontage, uh, today, under the existing underlying district is eighty square, is eighty feet. And under the new zoning for the new district, it would be a hundred and fifty feet. The front yard setback uh, would have a, uh, setback of forty feet as opposed to currently, uh, by twenty feet. The side yard setbacks would be, uh, twenty-five feet as opposed to fourteen feet under the current condition or the underlying base zoning. The rear setback under the news, uh, zoning, uh, bylaw would be twenty-five feet as opposed to the rear setback of twenty feet uh, in the, uh, existing zoning. We have two different levels of heights. We're not sure whether the ultimate project will be designed with a flat roof or with a pitched roof. And if the project is designed with a, uh, a, a flat roof, the maximum height would be forty-three feet. And the maximum stories would be four stories regardless of it's, uh, regardless of the slope of the roof. If it's a flat roof or if it's a pitched roof, it's still four stories. But if it's a flat roof, it's forty-three feet in height. If it's a pitched roof, it would be, uh, it would be allowed to have a height of fifty-eight feet. There is mechanical, uh, roof coverage. There is no provision for that under the existing, uh, under the existing, uh, bylaw. And under the proposed bylaw would be a maximum coverage of twenty-five feet. But excluding any type of solar, um, uh, uh, solar panel, roof mounted solar system. Um, uh, so again, the current uh, height is two and a half stories under the underlying zoning. Uh, under the existing zoning and under the proposed zoning would be four stories. Um, and the floor area ratio would be allowed at zero point five. And that compared with the underlying zoning of ranging between, uh, floor area ratio between point three six to point three eight. Um, so we're increasing the density, we're increasing the height, we're increasing the number of stories. Um, and we're also limiting, uh, the amount of mechanical systems that could be on the roof. We're also increasing the setbacks. And we're increasing the minimum lock coverage and we're increasing the frontage. Finally, there is, uh, there is no provision under the underlying zoning for a requirement based on the, to allow the number of units per acre. And what we're proposing by this zoning is to allow for twenty-five, uh, units per acre. And again, that's eleven on, on eleven acres. Um, the, uh, the, the lot coverage ranges under the existing zoning between twenty-five and thirty-five percent. If it's an SRB district or a general residence district. And under the affordable housing district, it would be twenty percent, which is to say we're reducing the massing area in the district on what could be built, uh, to, uh, so there's less lock coverage by structure. Um, we have heard, it, we've presented this, uh, uh, in conjunction with the Needham Housing Authority in December at a community meeting. And also at that meeting, um, the architect for the Needham Housing Authority uh, presented a site plan and also presented some drawings and renderings on what the, on how they would interpret and, uh, uh, develop the site if they were granted their, uh, um, uh, a zoning bylaw, if we change the zoning bylaw and if we approve their site plan approval subsequently. And that reveals two hundred and forty-seven units as compared to the, under the current condition today where they have a hundred and fifty-two units. I believe those are studios. And, uh, and, you know, we're not really here to talk about the specifics of what a new development would be, but we, uh, but I'll show you momentarily. Um, what, uh, what the composition, uh, might be. So they, Needham Housing Authority has shared two site plans. Nothing has been definitive. Um, but it's to show an example of how this would potentially be, uh, laid out incorporating the new dimensional regulations. So there are effectively uh, two, um, two buildings. The first building would contain a hundred and thirty-six units. And that incorporates two sections built over two phases, uh, built over the one phase, uh, phase one A and, uh, phase one B. And, uh, we can see it here as one, ultimately one, uh, one building. And a few things to note under this design, which incorporates parking in the front just off the street, a setback, uh, the setback is eighty-seven feet at the closest point. Ninety-eight feet at the closest point of the lobby. And then this has the, uh, the second building, uh, the second phase building pushed down to a hundred and thirty-three feet. And here we see parking at the front. In addition to that, uh, we see, uh, the setbacks in the rear that exceed the dimensional requi- the minimum dimensional requirements. And uh, over here we see phase two. And ultimately, we're allowed, this zoning bylaw change would enable the potential for both buildings to be built. But it ought to be said that if, uh, if a developer is unable to obtain the financing for a second phase, the spec- uh, the phase two building might not be, uh, might not be built. Now, um, so just to take a look for a moment, uh, to focus in on, on a couple of important things. The front setback here is eighty-seven feet. And that compares with the front setback, uh, the minimum front setback, which will be forty feet. So it's almost, it's more than double uh, the, uh, the minimum setback uh, based on this design proposal. The next design proposal and the significant change between what we call site plan B, which was provided to us by the architect for the Housing Authority and site plan A is this location of phase one B, where the parking is in front versus parking is in rear. Again, we don't need to go through the details of this, except just to show that uh, in this case, when the building itself is moved forward, uh, the the minimum front setback is 40 feet. And the closest element of the lobby on this site, site plan B shows the setback at 40 feet and what that would look like. So that's just two different potential design plans later on. We understand from the Needham Housing Authority that again, if the zoning bylaw change is adopted by town meeting and they come back to us with, and once they've obtained financing, they come back to us for a site plan approval. That the composition of the phase one building would include 76 units in phase one, four, of four of which are two bedroom, would be two bedroom units. The majority, the rest would be one bedroom units. And the phase one B section of the building containing 60 units would have four two-bedroom units and the rest 56 units are all one bedrooms as opposed to the studios. Here is a rendering to show the heights. And the only renderings we have demonstrate a pitched roof. And this rendering shows a 53 feet or four stories. And that compares with the height allowed under a sloped roof, under the zoning bylaw change if approved at 58 feet. And here's to show an analysis on a section view showing the stories, four stories as an example. Here is the most of the site to see the site plan in a 3D context, an aerial view. Here we can see again, most of the site from, from Maple Street as a 3D rendering. Here is a rendering of a schematic design to show a sense of the building in context and in relation to, for instance, the house on the opposite side of Linden Street. And here again is another rendering, so here is another rendering. Not looking here to really discuss tonight the specific design elements, we're here to talk about the overall zoning. Unless my colleagues have any comments on the zoning, I would at this point want to go into public comment. Gene, you want to?
Yes.
Make some comments on that.
In your presentation, Mr. Chair, you referred several times to the underlying zoning and compared the proposed zoning to underlying zoning. Initially, the applicant proposed that the new zoning be an overlay. But then that concept was abandoned. This is going to replace the existing zoning. There will be no underlying zoning. If the new zoning will allow the, the use that's stated, that is affordable housing district project. And there will, there's no underlying zoning.
I, I appreciate the clarification. So we're replacing the single residence B and the general residence districts with the new affordable housing district. So there will be no more zoning in that site for single family homes or for the general residents.
Can you show the district and on the presentation again?
So the district map, actually, are you able to show that? Alex, I'm going to stop sharing. Thank you very much, Natasha. So this, we see on this screen is the whole of the, the district. The district contains a number of limiting factors by wetlands. And about 50% of the site itself is buildable. One little note is that the Needham Housing Authority currently owns the land outlined with the gray kind of shadowing. But the municipality, the town of Needham owns this tiny little, Alex, can you use your mouse? To circle that? You have that. So that little section is actually owned by the town and would be rezoned to be included into this district. And it would be up to the town, the municipality later to convey it to the housing authority if that was decided to be done. And so that, so this is the site under the, the current condition. This is the boundary of the, of the map change. And this will be the new district, the affordable housing district. And to Gene's point, we would no longer have single family zoning here and we would no longer have the general residence zoning. It would be replaced completely by the affordable housing district. So with that, but I, unless anyone else has any comments on the zoning itself?
I, no, I just want to stress because we've had this before in prior projects. People get hung up on the schematics that are presented.
Right.
The schematics are not being discussed tonight because legally, that's not what's in front of us.
Correct.
They're only being shown to the public to give the public some idea of what might be built. What ultimately might happen and ultimately could happen is that the housing authority could come back to us with one of those two schematics. Or they could come back to us with schematics based on that that are changed a bit. But they could come back to us with something totally different. As long as it fits within the zoning minimums, which we are discussing tonight to present to town meeting, to rezone the area. The schematics are to give the public an idea of a possibility of what could happen. That's not necessarily what's going to happen. That's not necessarily what's going to be in front of us in the future for site plan review. And so please don't, you know, it, it's, there are times with other projects where what wound up being built wasn't what was presented at the zoning. And people would come back and say, that's not what we voted on. And I'm saying, no, you're not voting on that at all. So you know, that, that's, I think it's important for people to remember that.
Thank you. Anything else before we go to public comment? So then.
I have a quick question, just, I just want to confirm all of the land that was in that, just to make sure that everybody understands is within the purview right now or owned by the housing authority?
Except that one little.
Except the one little section, right. But, but in general, there's no private land right now.
Correct.
That's being rezone.
Correct. Thank you. And it should also be mentioned that although it seems like this is, it is one site. A question of spot zoning may come up, and so just to head that off at the pass, this is actually not spot zoning, although we're zoning effectively one spot and, and a tiny little second spot. And, and the reason for that is because the town has an interest in contributing towards deeply affordable housing. And if town meeting adopts the zoning bylaw change, it's really, it's really not regarded as spot, as spot zoning. So with that, I'll just mention briefly our, our ground rules for, for public comment periods and then we'll go back and forth between the room and, and on Zoom. So first of all, as always, we ask you to state your name and your address for the record, please clearly, that's helpful. We ask you to keep your remarks to, to three minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. We ask you to address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with the previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while allowing time available for other people, so we can hear from our other neighbors as well. If you have multiple points to make, we'd like you to keep all of your comments to three minutes. And if you need more time, we'll genuinely attempt to come back to you after we've had an opportunity to hear from other people that haven't spoken yet. And then unless a question can be easily answered in the room, either by a board member or by staff, then we'll ask staff to note the question down. And we'll provide a, a frequently asked question segment. And we'll post that on our website in order to be able to answer and make available the answers to any questions that we're not able to easily answer tonight. So with that, I'd like to ask, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on the zoning changes? Then I would like to ask, can we see any attendees wanting to stop sharing?
Sure. Although I, I have it on my screen here and nobody's reading it.
Oh. So we'll hold this open for a moment because there may be some other people that do wish to speak.
A couple of people online have raised their hands.
Yes, they have.
Oh, okay, great. The first though I saw was in the back of the room. We'd ask you to come up to the front. We don't have any microphones, but we do have the owl, so that should be sufficient. Thank you very much. No, to have a seat, please, have a seat. And please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, I'm Jan Soma, 106 March Tree Road, which is a couple of blocks west of the Linden Chambers Community Housing. I'm also a precinct D town meeting member. So as a neighbor and a town meeting member, I'm speaking in favor of the proposed zoning. It will allow for the preservation of 152 affordable rental units that desperately need renewal. And it will allow for the creation of 95 new units. As you know, the 2022 Town of Needham Housing Plan pointed out that we have a shortfall of 436 rental units that need to be produced in light of the housing plan goal of 10% affordability across Needham. To my knowledge, there are only a few new affordable rental units being produced in the near future. This makes the 95 new Needham Housing Authority units especially important. Res zoning to allow the affordable housing district will offer an opportunity to create housing that is truly needed. Although no plan can claim to be perfect, the thoughtfulness and thoroughness of the Linden Chambers project deserves support. I strongly encourage the planning board to support the Needham Housing Authority rezoning plans for an affordable housing district. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like we have three people that would like to speak. The first is Ross Donald. We're going to bring you over as a speaker.
My name is Ross Donald. I live at 25 H Chamber Street. And that is the public housing, the part of the public housing project that we're talking about. Yeah. First, I'd like to say that I'm running for housing commissioner. It is a contested seat. I think that's healthy for the town to have different people running for these offices.
Ross, we have to focus the conversation on the zoning, not on any announcement for candidacy, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I wasn't planning on continuing along those lines, so you didn't have to interrupt me, I think. But that's all right. I think I need to say that my interest is in the residents. And I'd like to see work done. I think something needs to be done. But I'd like to, the work proceed without causing the elderly and disabled tenants any undue disruption or stress. I am, again, I am for public housing, but I'm against the demolition of public housing, both physically and conceptually. The public housing that's offered now is the only permanent affordable housing available for people that need it. The tear down of Linden Chambers is unwarranted, uneconomical and not good public policy. Plus at 20 units per acre, we're doing pretty good. So it may not be necessary on that score. The, the brick buildings on Chamber Street are a type of construction that is typically not torn down. It's often significantly remodeled. Often there's a gut rehab with the foundation and the brick the, the structure that provides a basis for what could be a passive house, a super retrofit. And I know I'm getting into the design, but I think this is important. The, your comment about addressing zoning changes only when we've heard in the discussion that the zoning is based on the design that's been presented. I don't think we can talk about the zoning changes without at least touching upon the designs.
For Ross, to be fair, it's not based, Ross, it's not based on the design. It's based on the external maximum footprint of the design. So, so this, this discussion is not about the design. It's just about the zoning, which gives the maximum envelope of what it could be. It's not, it's not, it's not about the design at all. It's simply about the zoning of the envelope or the area which, which something could be built in. So it'd be better if we just really keep it to the zoning itself, Ross.
Yeah, well, a lot of these comments are just in passing. I'm not dwelling on any of them. But I will say that there has been comments in, in your discussions about how the zoning changes are based on the design, so I'll, I'll move on, if that's okay. As for Linden Street Cluster Housing, these units were the affordable housing of its day. And I know I'm talking about the design, but this is what we're dealing with. The idea of, well, anyway, I'll, I'll move on. I am, I'm having an issue with, overall issue with information, information sharing. We had the hearing today and Adam, thank you very much for providing a couple of links yesterday. But that's the day before the hearing. I've been, I think access to the information has been a problem. I've been to nearly every housing authority board meeting and I've, I've been to a number of other meetings. And I've requested public information only to be either rebuffed or ignored. There have been many instances, I've been to the four T-chock meetings and I'd have to check the record. But at every meeting, I've asked for pre-development work. And on one occasion, the chair and the executive director were there and
Ross, 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 I, 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 there are other people here that would wish to speak and online. And I just need to remind you again that we're here to really focus on the zoning bylaw change. Do you have any comments to make specifically related to the zoning? Not related to access information?
Well, all right, the information that I've been asking for includes such things as Bob Smart's report. You know, we're talking about zoning now. He wrote the report for the housing authority. I'd like to see a copy of that. I've, I've been making requests of that for the past three or four months. Okay, there are 300 plus pages of pre-development work that has been mentioned several times at several committees. I'd like to see some of that, especially property.
Ross, it's not the purview of the planning board.
Yes, if I may interrupt.
Yes.
What I'm, and Mr. Ross, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Donald, Mr. Donald. I, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so correct me if I'm getting it wrong. But what I'm hearing Mr. Donald say is that he's against the zoning change. Because he doesn't think that the area needs to be redeveloped. He, I'm hearing him saying that the current buildings possibly need work to do because they're old. But they're structurally fine. And having 157 units of, that number is correct. It is, is adequate for the needs. And so when I'm, he is focusing on the zoning by saying And so when I'm, he is focusing on the zoning by saying he's not in favor of tearing down the buildings that are there. Putting up um new buildings that are four stories in height that increase from a hundred and fifty-seven units to two hundred and forty-seven units. And uh uh he, there's, there's, there's no reason to do a zoning change at all. And 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 again, Mr. Donald, if I've gotten that wrong. Please correct me.
Yeah, I think that's a very good uh summary from one perspective. Um I'm willing to be persuaded. I was a developer in Boston on Mission Hill, and uh, you know, I uh, I I can be persuaded that uh moving forward with a design that's appropriate in the context of zoning. Um, I, you know, um, I think I'm a reasonable person. Um, I think uh there, zoning provides several contexts, and one of them is the overall basic residential neighborhood, single family. Um, what zoning? Uh, and we have others that we're considering now, MBTA for multifamily. We also have what might be called environmental zoning, wetlands and open space and things like that. There is another one that we haven't considered, and I think that is considering uh is uh we're part of a school zone, you know, High Rock is a neighborhood community. And uh I think we haven't addressed that issue from the point of view of zoning uh enough. But, you know, I'm, um, yeah, um. The uh, there, there, I'd like to make a comment about the uh, the term low-income housing district. I think this is uh with the history of real estate redlining properties and areas to discriminate against minorities. I think it's a little too close to now segregate part of the town for economic reasons and create a special zone for uh what, poor people and so forth. Of course, you're changing the zoning to not you know, to allow anything beyond that. It's not going to be restricted to elderly or or anything else, which sort of opens it up to I don't, I don't know what. Here, here we know what the zoning is, um, and we can make improvements. We can make the place livable. Um, and uh, and not even, not even bother with any additional zoning changes. Um, especially um this having, and you don't want to call it spot zoning. It's, 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 it's special zoning um for one particular area, whether it's seven acres, eleven acres or whatever. But I noticed that uh, I don't know how recently this was, but in a nearby city, there were a hundred and ten units of multifamily housing uh put up mostly single um uh bedroom uh units. And they did this under a zoning ordinance that applied to that entire city. And my, if there's any parallelism here, we could say that whatever's good for Linden Chambers, why isn't that zoning good for the entire town?
Ross, uh, we, we, we've been, you've been uh speaking for about uh ten minutes now. There are other people that.
Okay, I'll come back for ten more minutes then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll, I'll come back to you. You have more comments. Uh, we appreciate your patience. Thank you very much. At this point, is there anyone else in the room here that has their hands up that would like to speak? I'd like you to come to the table, please, and state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, um, my name is Marlene Costa. I live at forty Chamber Street in Needham. And uh one of the concerns or questions I have is of the hundred and fifty-two units that exist, is that going to be rezoned as affordable housing? As opposed to senior and disabled housing?
The news, the new zoning would uh zone the area that we saw on that map. And would allow for um deeply affordable housing.
What is the definition of deeply affordable housing as far as income is concerned?
I I can give that to you if you want. It's, it's already in our bylaw. We already have a definition. And that's been incorporated in the proposed zoning. And what it is a dwelling unit that's affordable too and occupied by a household with income at or below eighty percent of median income. That's the definition. And there, there's more to it.
Well, in the town of Needham, what would be considered eighty AMI?
Oh gee, uh, I sure have that in my head, but I don't. Uh, it depends on family size. And if it were, say, a family of four.
Well, we're, um, you know, this, my interest would be for a single person, for example, which would be relevant. Usually, what is that, like eighty or ninety thousand dollars?
I, I think that's about right, about eighty for a single.
Okay, so where is the housing? So all, so the entire two hundred and forty-seven units, including the new ninety five, the ninety-five units that are new. Those are also going to be all, everything is going to be rezoned as affordable housing.
And to your other point.
So the point is, where is the senior and elderly housing?
So, I was just, I was just trying to go uh to met, to mention that, to respond to that, because I know that you mentioned, you raised that a second ago. We would eliminate, this zoning would eliminate, those restrictions come about as a result of uh a number of um uh deeds that relate to the property and uh and other instruments. The new zoning would uh would enable this affordable housing without restriction to disability or to age. So in other words, it's not, we're not limiting who can live here by age or by.
But there's no legal protection. In other words, if they find an individual's making eighty or ninety thousand and they're applying for housing, obviously that person is going to be more of perceived as a more desirable tenant than someone who's living on a, you know, a fixed income, a disability income, for example. So why on earth would they give an apartment to someone making less than eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year for a single individual? Because if you change the zoning, where is the protection for the current people living there of a hundred and fifty-two units? That don't make even a fraction of that kind of money?
Um, I don't know if we're about to let um a member, uh, Chair of the Housing Authority respond to this, but let me uh do my best to do so. Um, this, this property is owned by the Needham Housing Authority. The sources of funds for the redevelopment of this, of this property would require um incomes that are much lower than what's, what this definition is. And that's fine. It's, the definition is eighty percent of median or below. And the funding sources for the proposed development will be at a a lower level. Now, I, I, I don't recall if the absolute maximum is fifty percent of median income or down uh to thirty or thirty-five percent of median income, but something in that range.
So in other words, unless a person made, let's say it's fifty percent AMI, for example. If someone who is currently living on these properties made less than fifty percent AMI, they probably couldn't get a unit there. They would be displaced, in other words, potentially.
In accordance with the, the, the rent tax charges in accordance with the income of the individual. And it said, uh, typically thirty percent of the income would be individual. And I, I want to mention one other thing. Um, there are um very strict rules that prohibit displacement. The, the people who live there um, they um, they have to be provided with um a place to live while the co- while the um while the development is happening and the opportunity to return.
To the completed development.
Yes.
Hey, Jean, could I ask for clarification here?
Is that, is that?
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I ask, Jean, could I ask for clarification here?
Go ahead.
Is, in here, I don't see, I don't see a definition of deeply affordable housing in here.
We don't have that. And our, our, our.
It's only affordable.
Yeah, yeah.
Eighty percent or below.
Yeah, it's only affordable housing. Because, because our definitions of here are not defining this project here. What's defining this project here? Is the federal, federal or other guidelines what actually defines deeply affordable housing?
Right.
Which is not, which is not, which is not.
That applies to housing authority.
Yeah, which is not this.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, which is not.
Forces of funds, yes.
I mean, and and here and that, here it says, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent of the median income.
And to, and to.
So then, if that's the case.
Yes.
Then how am I, how would you answer the questions that I posed?
I don't know, I don't know what the income, I don't know what the income requirements are here, but they're a lot less, they're a lot less than.
So is Jean, is Jean, as I had to explaining, if you're a resident, anyone who is a resident of the existing hundred and fifty-six units.
Yes.
Uh, would be, uh, if the zoning bylaws passed.
The ones you're proposing here.
Correct. A town, town meeting adopts the zoning bylaw change as a step one. And as a step two, the uh, the Housing Authority comes to the planning board for a uh, um, uh, for a site plan um review. We complete the review and approve their application for uh for development. And if they raise the funding, and if they are then in a position to um uh begin construction, then as Jean is talking about, all existing residents are offered an opportunity. Um, uh, and I understand the construction would be phased to minimize the disruption, but tenants would be put up in a, in a facility uh temporarily until the phase one A is completed, phase one B is completed. And then later on, the phase two building. And existing tenants would be allowed the right to return back to, you know, back to uh the complex. Uh, regardless of their ability, regardless of their age. And yes, based on the the state and federal standards relating to uh to income that support the underlying public housing project.
So the new, the additional ninety-five units of additional housing.
Yes.
What would those rules contain for those tenants?
It would be, that be. It would be exactly the same.
The, the source of funds for the entire project will dictate the very low income. Those units as well, as I understand it. Um, I, I, I would certainly want to be corrected. Um, if I'm wrong by the applicant.
Before, already, sorry, well, I already had a comment first. I already had a comment first.
Excuse me.
No, no, go to Paul, go to Paul, go to Paul.
That I think is important to get this straight, okay? We have a zoning article in front of us. Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Agree.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chair. We have a, we have a zoning article in front of us. You want to limit it to the zoning article. And I want to explain that this zoning article does not mention deeply affordable housing. You have talked about deeply affordable housing. You have said that the purpose of this zoning is to have deeply affordable housing. Nowhere in this zoning amendment is the phrase deeply affordable housing used. Nowhere in our bylaws is deeply affordable housing used. This zoning could pass. And we could have built and used here affordable housing as defined, which is eighty percent, not thirty percent. And I don't want to give the public, and I don't want to give this, this important citizen who has raised this issue ve- very importantly, the wrong idea of what we're talking about tonight. We're not passing zoning for deeply affordable housing necessarily. It has been represented to us that that is the goal of the Needham Housing Authority. It's possibly the goal of their funding sources. We have not spoken to their funding sources. We have not seen their funding proposals. We have no idea what their funding is going to be. And for us to sit here and make representations as to what the funding sources are going to require is, I think, a very um uh, i- is, is doing a disservice to the residents of the town who are listening here tonight and to town meeting members who are going to be voting here. We should not be misrepresenting what's going to be in front of town meeting if this zoning article is going to town meeting by this board. So.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Chair.
Already had his hand up before you, already.
No, I know, I was just repeating something, but Paul, Paul, you have a, that's an extremely valid point, please. You know, we've been caught off, we've been caught before. Let's just phrase it that way. We both know a couple of times, we've been caught before. Where we're talking about something where that isn't necessarily what's in the zoning. And so it is very important that we make sure that what we are talking about and presenting. And uh, you know, if there is anything we need, need or don't need to do, uh, need because of that. So I think what you raised is, it's a smoothly valid point, Paul. Smoothly valid, point, point.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to go back.
I just had one other uh concern. So if these funding sources do not materialize, or there is some conflict over financing, would the Housing Authority then be able to, to sell portions off privately?
So.
Like to private development, because I believe about one of the board members here mentioned something about you know, Needham Housing Authority owns this land, all of the land, except for that one small portion. So do they have the right legally to sell that land, any portion of the land to a pr- private developer? Um, you know, because that money was originally set aside for public housing. So would they have a ru- a legal right to sell off any portion of that privately?
So the planning board is not in itself a legal body. However, any property owner is able to convey property in a legal manner. It should be noted, however, that regardless of the conveyance, any new property owner, any successor property owner would still be required to abide by the um, by the new, it would be now, the new zoning, if approved by town meeting.
Which actually, to get to your point, if there's zoning changes, as was pointed out by Ms. Knight earlier, we are this isn't an overlay district. We are getting rid of the current zoning and replacing it with affordable housing, which means that any new owner would be stuck with zoning that requires affordable housing. They could only, a new owner could only build affordable housing.
Yes.
But right now, right now, they could sell that land. This land is zoned for single-family residences. This land could be sold to a developer who could tear down everything that's there and build single-family residences. Right now legally by the current zone. So actually, this new zoning gives added protection to the affordable housing tenants who are currently there.
When you say currently there, you mean the people that are living there now, these hundred and fifty-two?
Because right now, it's an affordable housing development, right? People who are living there.
Well, it's senior and elderly.
It's senior and elderly, but it's my understanding, because it's the Needham Housing Authority, that it's senior and elderly who have we, you know, well below market rents.
Right, of course.
And uh. Who would probably qualify under the zoning for.
So if the zoning is changed and the funding does not materialize, then what could the city do in response to that?
So if the zoning bylaw.
Or their, their choices, the housing.
So if the, if this zoning bylaw change passes and the financing doesn't happen this year, the next year, the year after, ten years from now. Although the new zoning exists as they've uh existed previously under the previous deed restrictions uh under a, a, additional uh requirements as between the federal and state government relating to their funding sources that uh that enable the project. Um, uh, all of that, all of that remains. They could choose, they could choose to uh redevelop over more phases. They could choose not to redevelop. They could choose uh, you know, all the options are effectively under the table uh between renovating the existing structures or building new over a period of time as they're able to.
But I do want to say I heard a concern from you, and and I got one word to you, I'm also correcting what I wrong. I heard a concern from you for elderly and disabled tenants, because that's the current requirement. And that you are concerned about the change that's being proposed, which eliminates those requirements. So if this zoning were to pass and if um the, another provision, which has nothing to do with the planning board, but is being proposed, which is to get rid of the deed restrictions. but is being proposed, which is to get rid of the deed restrictions that currently exist in order to have what the Needham Housing Authority has, has in mind go forward, passes. Then as time goes on, and tenants move out, and new tenants move in, the Needham Housing Authority would not be restricted to those new tenants as being elderly and disabled. So if that's a concern of yours, yes, that is what's being proposed, is not only the zoning amendments that are being changed here, which is on this board, but there's also conversations that are going on with a select board to remove the current restrictions on the deeds.
Natasha, did you hear somebody?
But that's, excuse me, I, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt, but that is separate right now from the. Right.
Correct.
But that's also something that is on the table that's going.
That's, that's what we've been told is on the table, yes. And, and it's not just on the table, it's being happened in pursuit.
Okay, and who, when these, are there any public meetings or hearings concerning?
It's been already, I have no idea.
Okay.
The zoning bylaw amendment requires a public hearing. Um, the other changes that are on the warrant for the town meeting uh, are not of the type of changes that require a public hearing.
But could be addressed by, uh, by residents. And in some cases, non-residents, it's not, uh, acknowledged by, uh, town moderator, at town meeting. So in other words, at town meeting, if there is a non-zoning related article that removes the restrictions, then, uh, residents of the town are able to, to speak to that point.
Residents of the town who are, um, registered to the.
Entitled to speak, and sometimes in other cases, the town moderator will ask them for an exception by town meeting to enable someone who doesn't need those qualifications to speak. And almost always, town meeting allows it.
All right, well, thank you for answering my questions and giving me the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Questions, so they're related to this. Is there any chance that the Cambridge, I can't remember. The housing authority, the Needham Housing Authority could, could answer some of these questions, because when I was looking here, the median household income in Needham is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So eighty percent in a hundred and forty-six thousand.
You don't know if that's, uh.
That's from the census data from Needham, Massachusetts.
It's not Needham's median income.
So it's the area.
Area median income.
So what, do you know what that is?
I have it on the twenty-twenty-three, um, income limits for household size of one at eighty percent. Correct me if I'm wrong, anybody who does this for a living, is eighty-three thousand one hundred and twenty, according to.
Of the eighty percent.
That's eighty percent.
Okay, okay.
For household of one, that's right.
What about a household of two?
Ninety-five thousand forty.
And what's the source of that?
This is on the Boston Planning and Development Agency, uh, website.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would like.
Hold on a second, I just want to finish, so, yeah, I'd like, I just want, um, to ask a couple of questions regarding what is there right now, and, and, I mean, I know that you probably don't know the funding and everything, Reg, but just kind of to understand what it is that, um, you know, the, the, the plan would be for funding and all that, and what the requirements would be for the funding.
I prefer not to get into a funding discussion because it's really outside the purview of, of the zoning article.
But I think it is related to the, to the zoning article, because.
I'd like to ask Reg, uh, the, uh, Chair of the Needham Housing Authority, to please come to a table to be able to speak to address Natasha's funding question.
So your question is?
In, in general, the, the, what the zoning allows for right now, how is the new zoning changing the demographics? Because we're not doing seniors or disabled. Um, but what would, what would change in the, what would the funding require? Would it just require eighty percent? Would it require less than that, or?
So, um, there's a very long answer to a very simple question, but the simple answer, version of the answer is, uh, we're required to protect and replace all of the existing units on the same basis as they exist today. So in this case, we're tearing down seventy-two units for Linden Street, replacing it with a hundred and thirty-six units. Um, seventy-two of those units have to continue at the same uh, degree of affordability, which is very deeply affordable, as, as, as we all know here. Um, the second answer to the question is, even though the underlying zoning today is single residence, there is no possibility of us being able to make a decision to get out of the affordable housing business and sell it to a private developer and make a lot of money and do, do something else. Uh, we're very, very highly regulated by the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, and it would never, ever be approved for that, uh, our. Thirdly, our charter, of course, is a charter under chapter one twenty-one B, uh, which can be downloaded easily by anybody, and you could read what leads to the creation of a uh, a, a housing authority, that in this case, the Needham Housing Authority was created in nineteen forty-eight by Needham Town Meeting for a certain purpose, which is for affordable housing. Um, uh, another answer to one of the questions that came up here is, uh, the, the affordability level, the deepness of the affordability restrictions has never been part of Needham uh, town zoning bylaw, it's not a, it's always been as a result of the subs- subsidy funding that we receive. Uh, and in this case, um, you know, if we go forward with our development, there'll be some different levels. But there'll be, uh, if, with the whole redevelopment of the hundred and fifty-two to the two hundred and forty-six, always have to be a hundred and fifty-two units of deeply affordable housing. Uh, the tax credits, uh, allow for higher lo- however you want to say it, uh, fifty or sixty percent of affordability, but they don't go above sixty percent. Um, and, and, uh, there may be some subsidy units that we use that might allow us to go all the way up to eighty percent for a few of the apartments that are sort of, you know. Uh, but, uh, by and large, what we have now will continue in the same form. And, um, and, and the only thing that will really change is of some, uh, very old and worn out and small and inadequate studio apartments will become brand-new elevator building-served, one-bedroom units for, that are all affordable at one level or another.
And ADA compliant.
A bigger pardon?
And ADA compliant.
And of course, yes, MAB compliant, ADA compliant.
What is that, can you define that term?
Sure, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, it's the American Disabilities Act, so it requires, um, so although there may be residents that may have some disability as relates to the underlying, um, uh, deed restrictions and, and other instruments, um, with new construction, whi- which is all new construction, uh, uh, multifamily housing is required to, um, be compliant with, um, uh, American Disabilities Act.
And Mass Access Board.
And Mass Access Board, so this building would follow suit as well.
And, and to, um, uh, bring it back to maybe the zoning part, um, uh, the, yes, uh, we absolutely do want to have a transparent process with many opportunities for um, all members of town to comment. Um, we've had four resident meetings uh, with the Linden Chambers residents that have been well noticed at convenient times last year. And we will continue to have more residence meetings as we go through the process, should a town meeting approve these zoning articles. And, you know, I certainly hope, you know, these sorts of questions, some of the questions that were outside of the four corners of zoning tonight are absolutely fair game and would be addressed at whatever length they needed to be, and those, uh, they were in the previous residence meetings and will be in future residence meetings.
I'd like just to, just for the, to note here, what I would like to do is ensure that we coordinate with the housing authority to develop before town meeting a list of frequently asked questions and, uh, and we can categorize those, that I think may be helpful, uh, you know, for the community, and we can host them in part of our site and include it as part of the, uh, materials for the zoning bylaw change.
Including these questions and any further ones that come up tonight, I think that's absolutely.
I just have one clarification, so the additional new or additional ninety-five units, they are going to be rented based on either a sixty or an eighty percent AMI?
No.
So we'd like to speak to how those.
Well, it's just, uh, how, it's a very, we'll write down the answer. I mean, we'll write, we have written down the question, we'll write down the question, answers to all your questions, but it's not going to fit into a short period of time, and it'll be summarized in a way that will be missed in the meeting.
Okay, go ahead.
Lee, would you, um, just clarify, so this, this is called the, you know, the Affordable Housing District. Now, uh, so we are, are we defining that within our definition of here affordable housing, as in the eighty percent median income? Is that how, is that how we're defining this district now?
We already have a definition in our.
No, I just, I just want to make sure.
We're using that.
I just want to make sure, so we're defining it as eighty percent.
It's a, it's a multifamily housing development, affordable housing, and it's as defined in that.
So, so eighty, so eighty percent. So, so, okay, so, so Reg, the question I have is, when, I know it's getting back to funding again, but, and it's getting back to a valid question concerns, and that is, you're saying that, yeah, the existing tenants, they are at their, they are at their income level now. The future tenants can go up to thirty-five, sixty, and then you, then you phrase some of them could, some apartments could go up to eighty. When this, when going for funding, does that mean that the funding, um, con- this complicated formula, then the funding allows for eighty percent?
The fund, the funding allows for sixty percent, uh, for the main source of funding that we're.
The main source.
Up to sixty percent, so sixty thousand dollars a year, using the rough.
Okay, so sixty percent, you're saying.
And then, but let me also say, if we're going to get into this tomorrow, nobody will pay more than thirty percent of their income. And it, we don't sort of shop around for, uh, rich, uh, tenants. There's actually very long waiting lists, and a lot of regulatory procedures on how you select people off that waiting list, and people have been wait on that waiting list, and they pop up in the orders that they uh, originally applied a year or two or three ago. And so it's, it's not, if, so then, when whoever it is that's selected, if they're making twenty thousand dollars a year and they're eligible to be a permanent, they don't pay more than six thousand dollars a year in rent, regardless of, with, you know, all this funding complexity that is very complex.
I can, I appreciate that, I'm just, it, it's a very valid point, very valid point being raised. Paul made it very eloquently, very stated, very clearly, is, again, no, I'm serious, Paul.
I catch you everywhere.
That's true.
That's twice.
Yes, very good. Because, because, and I talked about, I used to work, I usually were caught, but, you know, we've had times before when those have been stated at town meeting where, you know, it's, do we believe that in essence, yes, but the actual zoning actually isn't saying that. So Paul's talking about, we need to talk about very specifically what it's saying, and you raised the point that it isn't saying that. It's, it isn't even saying what you're talking about, it's saying that we have the eighty percent. Then it's the housing authority then going for their funding, which is defining what it's going to be. Um, so the question I, so, yes, is this better protection than what was there before in the zoning? Yes, it is, because there was nothing there before, apparently, for the, I think, for the income. Um, so I guess my concern is, why, why aren't we doing something? Do we, should we, do we need to do anything?
Draft a restriction?
Do we need, do we need to do anything? Should we do anything?
Uh, well, I, 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 I have an answer for that question straight up, I mean, we defined it as the affordable. Uh, we, we use the definition that the state uses for affordable units, which is the eighty percent. And within that range, there are, are all different levels of affordable, but we did it at the top threshold of affordability. We give the housing authority the flexibility it needs, and if it's going to use most of its, most of the things are going to be in the lower end, that's fine, but if they have a situation where somebody's income is increasing, they could stay there until they get the eighty percent before they would be kicked out.
I'd like to further recognize, uh, in the audience and ask you to come to the table, please, uh, from the Cambridge Housing Authority, which is a consultant on the project, as part of that, also part of the, uh, zoning, uh, inform the zoning. Uh, can I ask you to please state your name and, uh, your affiliation, please, for the record?
My name is Matt S. Jeff, I'm the Deputy Director for, for the Cambridge Housing Authority, which is like where the Needham Housing Authority's development consultant. I, uh, just wanted to offer a few points of additional context to Reg's explanation about the incomes.
Could you speak up?
Certainly, apologies. Um, the question was raised earlier about how the imposed AMI requirement in the ordinance relates to what is currently at the property. The property is currently operated as state-assisted public housing. State-assisted public housing carries a requirement of an income limit of eighty percent of AMI. So the proposed zone is consistent with the existing income requirement at the property. The how the authority's ability to sell the land or not follow that AMI restriction is governed by agreements that it has with the state to operate as state of public housing. So it's not able to freely exit those agreements. With respect to the future development, I like to think about the income restrictions on a property as, uh, sort of layers that build upon each other from the increasing levels of restriction. So our least restrictive form of subsidy for the property would limit units to eighty percent of AMI as an income. And then, in order to make the project work, additional funding sources are added in, and those sources, as Reg is saying, will have income limits that may be lower than eighty percent AMI for all or a portion of the units. And the extent of that will be determined as we move forward with the project. But in general, the eighty percent AMI limit, again, is the least restrictive that would be applied to any unit. And the last one I want to make is in relation to the discussion of deeply affordable. Um, I recognize it was not written in the text of the ordinance, but that is the way that the Needham Housing Authority is committed to operating this property as something that has every unit attached to a rental subsidy, so that any tenant is only paying thirty percent of their income on rent, which makes it deeply affordable. So it's not codified in the zoning ordinance, it's a very important part of the Needham Housing Authority's commitment to how units will operate both for existing tenants and for future tenants. Um, I hope that this has offered some clarification on some points, and happy to dive into anything more.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I want to note, it's almost nine o'clock, there were other people, uh, on Zoom that also wanted to ask questions. Do you have any other last questions we've been?
I just want to clarify one thing.
Yes, Alex.
Um, our brilliant housing planner actually has this information on the Town of Needham's website. So, um, everybody can look there for the income limits that, um, are relevant. And it seems slightly different than what I read before, but only varying by one or two hundred dollars, so I'm not going to read them again. Um, but they are on the Town of Needham's website.
Whereabouts on the website?
Um, well, it's on the housing portion of the website, which you first go to the Planning and Community Development, and then the Housing Division. And then you would just scroll down. Um, if anybody is any trouble finding it, I'm happy to help, uh, but I just wanted to clarify that that's there.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, um, there were other people that we've, uh, three other people that, uh, that wish to speak, one of whom is from also the Cambridge Housing Authority. But I think what I'd like to do is to hear from another resident first, um, Um, uh so I'd like to ask if we could bring over James Goldstein. And James, we'll ask you to start with your name and address for the record, please. We cannot hear you, you're muted, James.
I apologize, James Goldstein, forty Coolidge Ave. Uh thank you for the opportunity, um I have just a couple of quick comments, my main comment. Um. Uh I had thought, thought about before the latest resident, I've forgotten your name, I apologize, had raised some very important issues. But my, uh my main comment is I support uh the first commenters, I think it was Jan Soma's view. To support the zoning amendment for the reasons uh she stated. Uh I'm familiar with the Needham Housing Plan from December twenty-two and the need for uh more affordable housing. And especially more affordable deeply, I, I mean, more deeply affordable housing. Uh I now have two or so caveats though, which um are reactions to what um uh the uh latest resident mentioned. Um, uh th- those caveats are um confirmation of what I believe Reg Foster has said. Which um uh I, I believe address uh to a large degree. The concerns of the previous um residents uh concerns. One is that all the hundred and fifty-two units that would be uh replaced. Uh would have the same affordability and other requirements, if, if I understood him correctly, uh as the current ones do. Um so uh that, that's a very important issue, and I think it needs to be confirmed um by the uh um Planning Board and the town. Uh the other um is uh. One second, um. The other is uh the issue of existing tenants. They obviously must be protected and be um uh provided with the, the new units. And I understood Reg to say that absolutely, they will have interim housing and tha- that's a little bit unclear where that is and how that works. But they would absolutely uh be eligible to move in to the new units. Uh those caveats seem extremely important um for the protection of existing residents. Uh uh I do believe that the ninety-five additional units may have somewhat different um requirements. But I'm very encouraged by what the Needham Housing Authority um uh their charter. The um the, the s- strong regulatory approvals required by the Executive Office of Housing and uh livable communities. And therefore, I think most of the concerns raised, while very valid, um I, I hope the uh Needham Authority um. That the Needham Housing Authority's responses address those, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um is there anyone else in the room that wished to speak? Uh when, if you're done, more.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jim Burke and I live at twenty eighty eight Sealy Linden Street. Yes, you don't mind.
Sure.
I'm disabled. What are the present day restrictions on the property? So that we can all make an informed and an intelligent decision. We hear restrictions, but I haven't heard them spelled out. The second item that I have. Is you as a board, would you be amenable? To define affordable housing and include A, B, C, D. That seniors would qualify, a disabled person would qualify. I am eighty-three years old, I am disabled, I have one eye. I would like some assurance that some, some Mister fundraiser who is non-existent. Will come down and say, I'm sorry, you don't qualify. I'm, and I know there's a statute that you might, might recite it. But I would like some assurance, you folks. So that we can make an intelligent and informed decision.
Yes, thank you very much, and I could, like to note that for Town Council, we'll. Uh uh post an answer to that, thank you for the question. Um, um. Uh I now like to go to uh Paula Dickerman. We could bring her over as a uh speaker, please.
You're muted, Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Um hi, I'm Paula Dickerman, I'm at twenty Burnside Road, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct J. Um. Much of what I wanted to say was said by Jan, uh Jan Soma and James Goldstein. I'd just like to add that one of the reasons that I am very in favor of this zoning. Is because of why it's being done in the first place, which is. That we are now as a town providing units to our residents that are substandard. And there's something we can do about that, so that we can provide quality housing to our residents. And the other thing is we're adding really needed units. To the inventory of affordable housing and specifically. Um Housing Authority managed housing in the state and of course in Needham. That is why I am in favor of this zoning, because it allows us to do those things. Um. I have faith in the seventy-five years of the Needham Housing Authority. Managing Linden and Chambers on zoning that allowed for single-family units. Under a definition of affordable housing that goes up to eighty percent. And for seventy-five years, they've been providing deeply affordable housing. Most of their residents, I believe, qualify at the thirty and fifty percent of AMI. Units, I have no reason to believe that that kind of thing will not continue, obviously there will be changes, there are always changes. But that's what our Needham Housing Authority is about. And I will be really proud to live in a town that isn't content to leave the units. The way they are. And wants to do the really hard work that's being done here to add additional units to the inventory. So I hope that the Planning Board will pass this zoning and that it will pass a town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paula. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak to this? Yes, like you to come to the table, please, and state your name for the record.
Hey, uh my name is Cynthia Contori and I live on uh Robinwood Ave. And basically, um you know, I noticed that. You were cutting off people because they weren't talking about the zoning, but. The last several speakers really were just like cheerleaders talking about nothing but not, not really just not talking about the zoning. And as a top former town meeting member, you know how these things work, that you have. You know, this one gets picked, that one gets picked at town meeting. And they say what, in favor of whatever they wanna do, and it's kind of like a done deal. And I'm disappointed in that, that we've got these Zoomers coming in here and they, they didn't talk about the zoning. And I, I um think the zoning is what this was supposed to be about. And the four stories in the middle of a residential area is troubling. I wonder if they would like that happening to their neighborhood, four stories. The parking lot being in front of the building when normally. You've got something, you know, a building, you, you put the parking in the back, you might have a drop-off there in the front. But that's, that's gonna be, that, that certainly isn't respectful to the people living in the neighborhood. Um. I just feel like, you know. Also couching this argumentation that, oh, if you're not for this particular project, you're against affordable housing, well, that's not true. I think it's, I think that if you want affordable housing. You, you should really think about where you put in it. And plunking it into a neighborhood across from the school. Is. I don't think, I don't think it's a good idea, I think that in the future. Uh there's gonna be problems with that. And I don't, I don't, I just wonder how, you know. Uh. This, you know, this area where it's just being changed so dramatically. And everyone is saying, well, if you don't like this, you're an evil person who doesn't like affordable housing, and that isn't it at all. Or you're an evil person who doesn't wanna upgrade the existing housing, that's not true either. There are other options, I mean, this building we're in right now. They wanted, the town wanted to change the town hall dramatically, put this box on the back. They said we have two choices, I said, no, why don't you put the um. Park and rack and so on over on uh where it is now. And we can have a prettier town hall and we can have the towers building, I came up with a third option. And here we are, we're sitting in it, and I'm just thinking, I, I, one of the things that really frustrated me at town meeting was. People characterize going after your character, I mean, what they did to my character was unbelievable. Because I don't think, I don't always go along with everything everybody else says, I always think, is there a better solution? And I've lived in my house for a long time and since nineteen eighty-six. And um. You know, changing the whole neighborhood by putting a high-rise, really, it's, it's a high-rise. When I first moved here, they took, made a building take a, a, a layer off, a whole, I don't know if you remember that already? They downtown, they had a zoning, they didn't wanna have tall buildings in Needham. So they, they made a building take a, 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 a top floor off. And now it's totally the character of the town is changing and they're gonna say, okay, we're gonna plunk a high-rise in the middle of a residential area. And we're gonna put the, you know, parking in front, which is unheard of. Most really go around from now on, if you're driving around and you see in a big apartment building, you're not gonna see the, the parking lot in the front. Out of respect for street appeal and so on. I mean, it's just so little regard for the neighbors and you hear these people from other parts of town. Oh, I think it's great, I think if that happened to them, they would, I don't know if they would say that, and um. Uh somebody said they should redistrict the whole town, I forgot who said it. I think that would be a great idea, and you'll see that, I mean, because what, what's really frustrating is that. I know this is gonna pass, you all know it's gonna pass, because Precinct D only has so many people that are town meeting members, and the rest of them are all gonna vote for it. And the reason I'm speaking is I just want you to be respectful as you can to our neighborhood and um. You know, think about street appeal, think about the school that's across the street. And the safety of those kids, I mean, I, I didn't even know, I'm so glad um some of these, I think, I forgot her name, I wrote it down. But um the young woman who just spoke, is it gonna change from disabled to? I, I always felt good about that. That they had elderly and disabled, and now that I find out that it could be anyone. You know, I, I don't know, they, they changed, they did change it a little bit. And let some people in that I was wondering, was that a good idea, and one of the elderly women was murdered, I don't know if you all remember that. And, you know, that woman wasn't vetted very well, who was brought in, I don't even think she was from Needham. So, you know, think about. The, that fact that we're gonna, instead of having elderly and disabled, now we're gonna have this larger unit with who knows who. And it's gonna be stuck next to a school and, you know. I think about pedophiles, I'm sorry to say that, but I do think about that, and I think about. Just changing the entire character of a neighborhood and. Attacking anyone who says, I don't know if I like this, as being some evil monster who wants people to be homeless, which isn't the case at all. In fact, I, at town meeting, and I talked to some of the selectmen outside of town meeting, I suggested years ago. They should bu- build apartment buildings at the uh industrial park. And they said, oh, we can't do that, it's zoned to be an industrial park, I said, well, you can change this zoning. And they've done it, and I think it's great, and, but that's the place where you should put four-story buildings, not in the middle of a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. I just, I don't, I don't think this is fair to that community, and I don't think they're evil, or we are evil, saying something, we, we actually chose. I chose to live in a, a place, my children were gonna go to a school, and the Realtor didn't even wanna drive me past there. I said, oh, can I see the school that my kids might go to, she said, oh, no, I don't wanna go by, let's go down Marjorie. And I said, no, I really wanna see it, and then she goes, there goes the sale. And I said, no, I think it's great there's affordable housing here. So to characterize the people who live there as being, you know, having everyone pile on them, please.
And do you have anything, do you have another comment to make?
Well, the four stories, I think that's too high. The parking lot in the front, I don't think that's right, and uh. You know, someone else here who lives there, several of them, there was a guy, I forgot his name, but he was originally one of the first speakers on Zoom. And then this gentleman who has problems with his knees, and he's disabled and he's terrified he's gonna be left out of this. And I just think, I know, I, I, I know a lot of disabled people who need housing. And now they're changing that character of that, that's not, I don't think that's good. Um. And that's about it, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to respond, Cynthia, I'd like to respond, please. Um, so I mean, we've known each other for a long time, yeah, a long time. And I mean, I know, I know how much you care about the town and so forth, and, and talking about, talking about various people in the town. And I mean, these, you know, what I've learned through various organizations, I've been in that, you know, the people here, people there, they're no different than you and I. And what we're, what we're doing, whatever happens, the goal is to treat them with respect, that they deserve, with time. Which is, I mean, in housing, you know, the housing, what they have a housing, is a, is a, kind of just defined by who we are as a community. Making sure they have something that is, 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 they're comfortable then, they can be in. And, and these right now, you know, it needs a lot of work, there's, there's, there's too much going on there, they need something, and we need more housing. And now, one thing, you know, we were talking about, you know, different affordability levels, and I was even raising the concern. Well, you can't, you know, next turn, maybe it's letting, maybe it's going too high and so forth. And then, you know, Reg, you're saying, let's, you know, that mathematical point, well, one thing that's good is that, you know, we talk about the demographics, what we have in town. And varying demographics, even within a little community, is, is good, actually is a good thing, even within, even within this. Um whatever is built there, having varying demographics of a four, of, of income levels would actually be a good thing. And I think, I know you didn't really mean, you were talking about, you, 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 you gave some definition of someone who could live there. And, and pedophile, but that's, that's a very gross, and that's really grossly unfair. I know, I, that, that, that was gross.
People will definitely do that.
Yeah, but it's grossly unfair to even bring up that term, I know you don't, I, I know, I know that's, I know that's not who you are, I know that. But it's, it's, you know, it's grossly unfair to bring up that term even remotely related to this project and, and what we're doing. So I, I, I ask that we never do that again, yeah, that's really grossly unfair. Because these people, and they're no different than you and I.
I never said they would definitely be that, I just said that, I'm just pointing out that you guys, I don't know who did it, but they let somebody in who wasn't vetted very well.
Then, then we do, then, then we, then we do, then we do a better job. But, but then we do a better job, but I, I don't wanna talk about, you know, it's, it's, it's not good to talk about the people. Who, you know, the fears of town, we don't wanna talk about the fears, is we do a better job, but then literally, they're no different than you and I, they truly are not.
Who, pedophiles are?
No, no.
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's absurd, that's absurd, that's absurd, that's absurd.
I know.
I'd like already hear a case.
I remind the board that the purpose of the hearing is not to have a debate with the people who are sweeping. You know, the purpose of the hearing is for us to obtain information and opinions. From uh, from the citizenry. from, uh, from the citizenry of the town. And not to engage in debate.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, on Zoom? Alex, are you able to scroll down to see if there are any hands up or they automatically filtered to the top?
You do.
And is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak before? Okay, uh, so, yeah, so. We have two people, uh, in the room and one in, uh, on Zoom that wishes to speak. Ross, I, I understand. I just need a second to be able to get there. Thank you. Uh, Ross, I, I see that you have your hand up. You have spoken. There are two people in the room that have not yet spoken. I'm going to, uh, first come to them and then I'll, uh, go back to Zoom and, uh, uh, Oscar, your hand was up first. I'd like to ask you to come to the table and, uh, say your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oscar Mertz, sixty-seven Rybrow Hill. Um, I think this is, this, I'm an architect and I'm a planner, so I've, I've been particularly interested in the conversation about scale. And I think, and I appreciate a lot of the, the concern about that. And, and I know that juxtaposing bigger buildings and smaller buildings does sometimes feel awkward or feels wrong. We're all facing those questions, maybe not in our own neighborhoods, but across town, I think every town, looking to find ways to add density, add housing, because we have so little of it and we have such little choice. So I do think we have a, and I think that the duty to our Needham Housing Authority residents is, as, as was eloquently said before, long overdue and, 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 and I think we're all proud to address that. The, but I, I will say one thing about scale and how it works in neighborhoods. One, one of the things that I think is on the minds of everyone who's in the design profession, and particularly the architects who are challenged with this one, this project, is that trying to site that building and to find the right way to solve a problem for those, for that community. Um, I think it's an interesting situation where we have a large open space with, and we have a school. And we have a position for a building. And, and so I think it's uniquely positive that for this site, there aren't single-family houses across the street. It's actually a big open space. And so what's great about that is that when people appreciate, walk and see this building in the context of the neighborhood, the placement of that building, and I agree, is there's some push and pull on whether the park is in the front or parked in the back. And I know the architects have studied, is it better here or there? In fact, what I liked about the parking in front is that in a way it's a public gesture. And I think that that parking, I'm, I am hopeful, I'm optimistic that when those fields are overwhelmed and people need to find a place to park and the kids are jumping out of the car, that I think that parking lot hopefully will have some additional parking for the people in fields. And so I think there's a public nature to this house, this building, that's actually important. And the sighting of that building set back and across from a large open space is actually very well-suited. And so I think i- in many ways, uh, we do have to figure out how these buildings do work within the context of these neighborhoods. And this is an interesting mix because you've got schools, you've got larger buildings, you've got smaller, single-family buildings. And so I think it's, it's a balancing act. But I think in this case, it's, it seems like it actually is a pretty good solution. So I'm, I'm in favor of this scale because I think it's trying to do the right thing for this community. And it's also trying to do the right thing for the placement of that building relative to the neighborhood. So I just want to say.
Thank you very much, Oscar. I'm checking on Zoom. Uh, we, I see that we have, uh, Jim, I saw that your hand was up. I'll come to you in a minute. Uh, Ross, I see your hand is still up. We will appreciate your patience. Come back to you, but uh, I see that we have someone else who wishes to speak. Rob, uh, Dangle. We could bring Rob over. That would be helpful. And Rob, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful too, please. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Can't see you though.
Yeah, sorry. I'm on my phone. You probably don't want to see me. I have a face for radio anyway, so I'm sparing you the pain. So, very interesting conversation. Uh, I don't want to belabor the point here. We all understand, uh, you know, the noble cause for affordable housing, deeply affordable, and especially, uh, solving the problem for elderly and disabled, um, folks in the town. Uh, my, I just have a couple of questions and, um, just after speaking to, uh, a bunch of other residents in the town about this project and this zoning specifically, and I, I failed to identify where I live. Sorry about that. So, uh, my name is Rob Dangle, twenty-eight, Hewitt Circle in Needham, uh, precinct A. I'm also a town meeting member. Um, so a couple of questions, uh, folks have asked me, and I'm just going to convey them to you to kind of think about, is, uh, there are some questions around why is this zoning being so, so open? Um, and why are we removing or, or not including a designation for elderly and disabled? And I know that's come up several times. Uh, and I know we want this to be kind of open as accept and as accepting as possible. But I think in the spirit of the residents that live there now and what would be acceptable to the adjacent neighbors in that zoning, I think uh, a lot of the neighbors in that area probably feel more comfortable if, um, you know, the zoning has some protection by designating elderly and disabled. So that, that's kind of point number one. Um, uh, one of the, uh, one of the folks in the room, I believe it was, uh, Oscar, mentioned something about there aren't single families, um, you know, a- across the street, and he's absolutely correct about that. But there are single-family residences uh, adjacent to that property and to that site. And, um, you know, they need to be considered because, uh, that street in and of itself is extremely narrow. And this zoning by right, I think, is a little too dense to support just the traffic patterns in there. And I haven't heard anything about traffic studies uh, for what could possibly be built on this site. We all kind of know what's going to be built there, but we just got to consider that that street, super narrow, people complain about it as it is right now with the density that it is now. Um, if you're going to add an additional ninety-plus units to this area, you, you've got to factor in what that's going to do for that narrow street. And, um, there's going to have to be either widening or just needs to be considered. Um, and I'm trying to think, did I have any other point? And that was basically it. Thanks for, uh, giving me the forum. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Rob. I'd like to recognize, uh, Jim, if you could come to the table, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Thanks, everyone. My name is Jim Flanagan. I live at eight sixty-three Webster Street in G precinct, and I am a town meeting member. Um, I'm speaking today in favor of both articles. Um, what I want to speak to specifically related to zone is something I've experienced from decades of public service in schools and towns. Sometimes we think, hey, let the town prescribe more, put more detail in and it'll protect us and it will serve us. Sounds well-intended, right? But those come in. And then restrictions come in from the state and the federal. And you know who's not served? The current residents. Circumstances arise. Someone wins a lottery. Someone makes a little bit more money. Someone has a unique personal circumstance. Someone needs some temporary support to come in. And suddenly, guess what? They don't fit. And the people closest to serving them can't do their jobs because with all of the rules that have been put in place suddenly cause a situation where they can't be served. So as you do this important work to update the zone, right? And that's really what we're doing. We're updating, clarifying the zoning, aligning it with the town. The town hasn't put a bunch of layers in and constraints around highly affordable, affordable. Um, because I think at the end of the day, I strongly believe that this rezoning, along with the history of the NHA and the intent of the project, will, is what's best for current residents, new residents that meet the senior and disabled criteria, and residents for future generations to be served. Um, we'll be lucky if we've served all of those populations so well and it all at a deeply affordable level that we can then consider other pop- populations. That'll be a victory, but I don't think that'll happen in my life. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, uh, I would like to speak either in the room or on Zoom. I, if not, then I'm going to go to, uh, to Ross and that might be our last speaker, uh, for the night. Uh, if we could bring Ross back over. Ross, if you have anything particularly new to, uh, to mention, that would be helpful. And Ross, if you're sorry, if you could say your full name for the record again, please, that would be helpful.
Ross Donald, again, twenty-five, uh, H. Chamber Street. And I'm, I'm, I, I want to express some appreciation that people have, uh, so many people here have the talent, the skill, experience and in zoning and, and these, uh, higher, I say higher level, um, matters. Um, but I'd like some advice and maybe on how to deal with a, a day-to-day problem in, uh, but also trying to look at it in the context of zoning. In nineteen sixty-one, apparently there was a zoning variance granted to the housing authority to do multifamily housing and a community building. Um, it's, uh, taken a complaint to the building commissioner to exa- to examine that and see. And he believes that, uh, sure, you know, in, in, well, there's going to be an inspection of one sixty-four Linden Street, as to whether it complies with existing zoning. And he believes it doesn't. I believe it doesn't. It's being used for maintenance instead of a community building. So, and in these day-to-day kind of, um, nitty-gritty kinds of things, what do you suggest about having the residents' interests being met? I mean, this building has been used, uh, in something short of the highest and best use for, uh, maybe fifteen years. So.
Do you have any, any, any other comments, Ross?
No, no, this is fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, do my colleagues have any?
That was my question to see if there's any, any suggestions you have on the data information. How do I get the information that, uh, has been produced, uh, you know, pre-development and so forth? Um, uh, the, uh, person that was speaking for the housing authority consultant, um, presented before the residents a relocation plan. But, and I appreciate that his, um, computer work was not factored into, uh, the document that was given to the residents, but, uh, we still have no, um, written relocation plan. And yet they, they talk about it as if there's, there's something in place that's been delivered, um, to the residents. So how, there's, there's two examples of, uh, my needs as a resident not being met. Any, um, suggestions?
I, uh, I, given the scope of the, the limited scope of the hearing, uh, at this point, I can recommend that you, uh, communicate with the Needham Housing Authority, um, uh, as the, you know, as your landlord, uh, and the, and also that you're, would, would be the developer to provide more information, uh, that you're looking for and specifically any relocation plans that may, uh, you know, that may, uh, relate. I, I, I recognize your, your concern. It's a valid concern. It's outside of the scope of the, this hearing. And all I can, um, recommend is to speak with, uh, you know, the landlord, um, the Needham Housing Authority, uh, who would have to address that. Do you have anything else, Ross?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room? Now I'd like to turn to my colleagues. Artie, would you like to say anything, comment, questions? Natasha, any comments or questions?
Well, my, my two concerns were answered, which was, you know, you're, you were talking about deeply affordable housing versus affordable housing. So I feel comfortable with the affordable housing at eighty percent and understanding that there's an equation that will probably yield lower as well.
So there's that equation, the regulatory regime that restricts.
Well, it depends on the funding. So yes.
Yes, exactly.
And, um, and then the other piece that I looked at was up and down Linden Street. I was looking at the setbacks of the houses just in case that the forty feet was appropriate. And it seems to be appropriate. They all seem to be within thirty-five feet. Well, maximum forty feet. So those two things were the things that I was mostly concerned about.
Thank you. Uh, Jane, do you have any comments?
No.
Paul, do you have any comments?
Glad you came to me last because, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move on some more.
Um, sure. We have a motion to close the hearing. We have a second, second by Artie. Uh, any discussion? I, I, on point of discussion, would just say that um, there are people here in the room that may not have spoken. There may be people at home that may not have spoken. In terms of the process going forward, um, once we close the hearing at a point in the, uh, in the next several weeks, the planning board will convene in itself. Uh, it'll be an, an open meeting, but it will not be public participation. Uh, it's not open for public participation. It's, you can observe the proceedings. And then we will deliberate on what we've heard tonight and discuss any further changes, if any, to zoning bylaw. I will note that the, we've heard from, I think the most common feedback that we've had is a request to preserve the restrictions, which is a concept that we've spoken about as a board specifically to remove in the zoning, to remove those restrictions as it's currently stated. So that, you know, that will and other elements will come back to the board for the board's discussion. Uh, and if you have any comments on this or anything else related to, uh, either the development or, um, or the zoning bylaw in particular, your comments are welcome. You can reach us at, by email at Needham MA, actually, I apologize, planning at Needham MA dot gov. So again, the email address for those at home is, uh, planning@needhamma.gov. This is clearly a complicated, uh, uh, zoning bylaw. Um, in a, for a couple of reasons. One, we're not specifically stating deeply affordable. And yet to Paul's point earlier, my colleague's point earlier, I was addressing a a broader community goal of serving, as we've discovered tonight, a deeply affordable population and, and preserving that as, um, uh, as the goal of the Needham Housing Authority, uh, who would ultimately redevelop if they're able to secure funding if this passes at town meeting. So we're not done yet. You know, there's still a road ahead of us. Um, and then, uh, our final recommendation, we will vote our final changes, if any, to the zoning bylaw. And then that would get printed in the warrant. And then this goes on to the, uh, town meeting, which will be in May. Do we have a date on town meeting yet? The first, it's Monday the ninth, May the ninth.
First Monday in May, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday.
Right, so.
Often the zoning doesn't come up until Wednesday.
May.
So maybe May sixth or May eighth.
May sixth is the first Monday.
So the warrant has to close. Once the warrant closes, we've established, resolved what day is town meeting will be. Town meeting can sometimes get extended, uh, and there'll be an opportunity as well for your, uh, to be heard at town meeting on this zoning bylaw, whether you're a town meeting member or not. Um, uh, and with those points of discussion, I now like to take a vote. This is not a motion to close the hearing. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Uh, the ayes, uh, carry, uh, unanimously. We have closed the hearing. Thank you all for your, uh, participation tonight and for coming. And, uh, we appreciate everyone, uh, by Zoom and in the room. Thank you all very much. Um, this brings us to our next item on the agenda. Uh, which is an A and R plan, uh, for Rockham Holdings relating to the property of forty-six, uh, Heather Lane. For everyone in the room, if I, if I could ask, excuse me, Matt. Excuse me, Matt. If I could just ask anyone, if you want to have a further conversation to take it outside, we still have to continue our, uh, our meeting. Uh, we appreciate your patience with us. Um, I.
Once again, Mr. Chair, thank you for waiting.
As my wife likes to say, I'll be rewarded in heaven.
So with respect to uh, uh, the plan, um, we have with us tonight Attorney George Jinter Junior and his client, I suspect, the developer, like to state.
Not the developer. This is Stephen Sands, he's actually the owner.
The owner, I apologize, the owner of the property. Thank you very much. Uh, so um, we, we have the site plan in front of us. I was actually first gonna ask Lee if the plan is compliant.
Yes, the plan is, if it is compliant, the plan is going to be reviewed by staff and we have no comments or we don't make them.
Right, uh, I would continue with my uh, uh colleagues, do you have any comments or questions on the plan? Artie?
No.
Natasha?
No.
Uh, Jean?
Um, I just want to make sure I'm reading this plan correctly. Um, and I see the frontage, I see the lot worth and the acres. Um, does Lot A two extend all the way down to Chestnut Street? In the back, by the river?
It, it does in that, like a dogleg piece that comes down, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I was reading correctly. And it's uh, that back area of the lot, of course, is uh traversed by uh N W R, sewer easement. And uh, all right, uh, that, that was them, and then lots two, yeah, that was a sewer easement, but I'm right through it, learning to. So it's a busy, it's a busy, busy area for infrastructure.
It is, there's, there's a lot of easements and a lot of infrastructure there, yes.
Yes, um, all right, that, that was, I just asked for clarification, but thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Paul, do you have any comments or questions? Julie, maybe you'd like to add?
No, it's, uh, this is basically, you know, we discussed with the board a while back and um, and it took a little bit, but the survey got completed, the plan got completed. So we're just closing the loop and taking a step.
Okay. Uh.
The way, I, I would say also that we, we knew when that had, when Heather Lane uh was approved, that the subdivision that brought Heather Lane up and the roadway itself was improved, we knew that would um create this, create the opportunity for land division. Because now there could be not an argument that Heather Lane is inadequate for access.
And these lots were not part of, we're not, within the subdivision itself.
They're not.
Those streets are, I think, a binder and those streets are haunted.
So would someone like to make a motion? Yes, uh, the, uh, the chair will recognize Attorney Robert Smart, if you could come to the table, please, and state your name and affiliation.
I, I represent the Heather Lane Homeowners Association Trust, and I was involved with the, with, with the subdivision, Bill Pierceak and now Kobe Campbell. And uh, if you look at the, if you look at the subdivision decision itself, uh, it says that every, every owner of a lot served by the way, except being Heather Lane. Yeah, shall be jointly and separately responsible and liable to the uh trust, you know, for the costs of maintenance of the road, um, repair, reconstruction of the way, and installation of the services. Um, and so I want to make sure that the, um, that the developers are aware of that, and George and I have communicated it. It's some length of an agreement, we, we'd actually like to finalize that, to make clear what the arran- what, what the arrangement is. You know, I understand that, that Rocket Holdings is, is not going to be part of the, not going to be part of the trust. But the, the, the agreement that we've been working on, we haven't, and we haven't finalized, is supposed to, is supposed to indicate, you know, their share, the ongoing costs of the maintenance is going, is going to be repaired, is going to be uh, is going to be required. And liability insurance should be maintained, um, there should be an indemnification relating to the work that gets done, a possible damage, um, you know, doing the work to repair the road. So as my client is about to uh finish, refinish the surface of the road in April. And is concerned that it might get dug up again, uh, and wants, and, and wants to be, you know, sure that you're gonna, you're gonna step up and, and take care. So I just want to remember.
This is a very interesting point because the whole concept here of an approval not required program is that it's outside of, uh, it qualifies by right without the requirements of a subdivision control law. So.
Well, this, these, these lots are not part of the subdivision.
What's that?
These lots were not part of the subdivision, even though they fronted on the way and the decision that we issued relates to the subdivision land and not these lots.
Right.
Right, but the, but the, but the, the subdivision de- decision does say that, it does specifically address this issue and say that owners of lots will serve by this private way, and you know, have to contribute to the ongoing maintenance.
And there's, and we are aware of that and in agreement with that, and as Bob indicated, he and I, I think we are either complete or ninety-nine point nine percent complete on, on the agreement to basically solidify that with the basically the management of the way, which collects the funds to apply, because it is a private way. Um, so, so we are basically there on that, but we, we're aware of that and that that's a part of.
So for the, so for the record, you accept your responsibility?
Yes.
Under the underlying decision for the subdivision that was created pursuant to the subdivision control law?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, do you have any comments with respect to such agreement?
Not really, other than, I, I think we, we have been working on it for a while, it got put aside because it took so long to get the, the plan done and also, uh, when we started, it was in the summer, I think. So it, we, we knew there was going to be a long time before anything was going to happen with the property, so. But I think we're, as I said, either a hundred percent or ninety-nine point nine percent uh on that, on the text of the agreement, we're in agreement on principle. So uh, we're good there.
And Attorney Smart, you're otherwise satisfied then?
I think we'll, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, uh, Jean, you have a comment?
I just wanted to reiterate your point that Mr. Jent just said that this is a private way. So that all the butters have a responsibility to uh, to participate in the upkeep of the way and where. And so if the agreement that was agreed to as part of the subdivision is a reasonable agreement that uh every, that would, would address that issue, that's great, um, but it's a little bit, I think, beyond what's before us.
I want, I want to be clear that, I appreciate that, thank you very much. All right, um, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
And I move that we approve the plan as a, as an improvement of the plan.
We have a motion by Paul, second by Jean, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We unanimously approve, uh, voted to endorse uh the plan as approval not required and subsequently this evening will sign the, the plans.
Okay, great, great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, this brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is um, uh, our review and endorsement of an A and R plan for Brendan Silva LLC for the property located at five forty-three Gre- at Greendale Avenue. Are we able to bring up that plan? Um.
There's somebody who is, uh, Mr. Jent, are you here to speak to this?
No, but there is, but there is, uh, I believe Paul Bouyer, who's part of the surveyor uh team, uh, that maybe they wish to bring over. Uh, I see Paul is here. Paul, would you, oh, note for the record, this property address had come to us for a previous A and R endorsement, which we approved. Paul, would you like to speak to what's different?
Well, so initially, they'd cut off two parcels to the left, leaving the, a larger remaining parcel, which had the majority of the existing church building on it. Then, once they, once they demolished the previously existing church, now they are dividing this remaining piece to then subsequently be developed or sold off.
So you're, so we previously approved three lots and now one of those three lots will be sub- subsequently subdivided into two separate lots for a total of four lots from the original, is that correct?
The original divided ultimately at the end of the day, four lots.
Okay, so this is one of those three lots that we previously approved to be subsequently, okay, understood. Uh, Lee, is the uh plan compliant?
Yeah, it's going to be by staff and it's compliant.
Does anyone have any comments, Paul?
Well, first of all, Paul, it's good to see you, it's been a long time.
Good to see you too, sorry, it's by Zoom.
Yeah, um, you know, I was curious when this was, when the prior plan was brought to us, why they didn't do four lots instead of three. And, you know, I'm getting off topic here because there's something wrong with the plan, it should be, it will be approved. But I'm, I'm just curious as to why they didn't subdivide it into four lots a- a- at the beginning, if you know that.
There was just some uh staged intent, just they, they weren't sure which pathway they were going to go and as a design feature and as we're trying to figure out best to take advantage and uh work with the rather radical topography that's on this site as it rises rather precipitously in an attempt to be creative, we ended up with something a little less creative.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, Michael.
Uh, I just wanted to check with the call, the rest of our colleagues. Jean, do you have any comments? Uh, Natasha, do you have any comments?
Well, I move that we approve the uh plan as an A and R plan.
I do want to tell you, there's someone with their hand raised, I know it's not a hearing, but the previous A and R Bob spoke, so.
Yes, understood.
Want you to know.
Yes, thank you for raising that. Can we bring uh Aaron's Ryan over? Aaron, we'd ask you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, uh, my address is seventy-nine Evelyn Road, um, and uh in Needham. Uh, the reason I'm talking about this property, or if I haven't afforded the ability to talk about the property is uh, my in-laws live uh adjacent to the, what used to be Lot Four C. But I guess with this new plan, it's uh for E and D. And uh, just wanted to make sure that, you know, because of, with all the trees got down on both sides, there weren't as many trees on the church side, but on the other side as well, and also just the, the landscape. You know, the developer could just keep in mind the grading of the properties, just to make sure that, I know it's, it'll be, you know, put in the, the building permit. Uh, but as well, just uh, you know, keep in mind the grading so that the water runoff doesn't run off onto my in-laws' properties or vice versa, onto the homeowners on the other side, just because of the, the sheer volume of trees and, and uh land that was, that was cut.
Thank you very much, you have anything else, Mr. Ryan?
Uh, no, thank you, that's it, thank you very much, yep.
Thank you very much, uh, Paul, I'm sure that you've, uh, you've heard those comments and uh, we trust you to relay those to the uh developer and will be mindful of stormwater management um on all the butters. Um, I, this brings us to the next item on our, um, I apologize. Uh, we had a motion, do we have a motion, we did, you had a motion?
I moved, I don't know if I heard the second.
We have a second.
We have someone second motion, we have a second by Jean, um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the ayes carry unanimously now. Thanks, Paul, brings, this brings us to uh the next item on our uh agenda, which is the decision for de minimis change relating to the major project site plan, special permit number nine seven dash twelve of four 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 uh group LLC as the petitioner in respect of the property located at four four two and four 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 Hillside Avenue. Um, first, do my colleagues have any comments or questions about this decision?
I just got one typo.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to follow you earlier, which is in paragraph, like, but, but findings and conclusions, paragraph three, uh, one, two, three, four lines down. You've got the original locus with an ending parentheses, you don't have a beginning parentheses. Other than that, it looks perfect unless Mr. Quinta has any issues.
I recognize for the record that Attorney uh George Jinter Junior uh is at the table as the attorney representing uh the petitioner. Um, do you have any comments?
As the engineering department likes to say, no comment or objection.
Right, so I'll pretend that I'm Marty Jacobs and say, Mr. Jenta, have you read the decision?
Yes.
So we've channeled our former colleague, Mr. Jacobs, it's lovely. Uh, anyone else have any comments or questions? Then, uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve the request of relief and then the decision? So we'll take a motion.
Or did we just vote to accept it as a de minimis change?
I think it's because of the, we accepted it as a de minimis change.
Okay, then, um, I move that, um, and the first one, Paul, yes, very voter number one. I move that the requested modifications are granted consistent with the plan that was before us, uh, subject to the benefit of the conditions and limitations set forth in the plan of, of the draft decision that's in place.
With the changes further made tonight?
No, with one, like a graphic change, yeah.
Um, we have a motion by Paul, a second by.
Second.
Second by Natasha, leaving us hanging there, uh, any discussions?
Getting late.
Hearing none, I'll come to the vote.
A question was asked to the motion, did the motion refer to this being a major project site, a special permit amendment? I wondered if that was where it should be in the motion.
I don't believe that it did.
No, it didn't.
Do you think it should be in?
Because I read, we have, by unanimous vote, the planning board votes that, and so I read what.
Oh, I see.
What the decision says we voted.
Which, which is a de minimis change to treat.
Well, that was number one, which we, we voted that last time. We voted the, the de minimis change at the last year.
Well, I'm just stating for the record that this is a de minimis change.
Okay, but, oh, the, the post-graduate, and then the question mark, if there's a granted position. Oh, okay, I saw, that's, well, it's worded then, I'm no objection, um.
No discussion?
No discussion.
Very good, uh, all in favor of the first motion to approve the request to relieve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
And now I move that we um, that we accept the amendment, amendment to decision dated February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and then Friday, last week, the change.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the motion carries unanimously, we have approved the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh. All right. We have two, we're, we're doing well, we're almost done here, we have two, um, uh, minutes in our packet, one for December five, the other for December six. I'll take the first.
Okay, the first one, that just has some, some redlining without any questions.
So then would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December five as drafted in our uh packet and as further, as further redlined in our package?
So will.
We have a motion by Artie, a second by.
Second.
By Paul, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously, we've approved the minutes of December five, now comes the minutes of December sixth, uh, which there were some comments, my computer thought after.
Yes, just a couple of uh, of questions, um, on page uh two, uh, we're talking about London Changers, uh, and the proposed project design is presented. Um, and the speaker, who was um Dan Chen, the architect of. Um, and the speaker who was, um, Dan Chen, the architectural firm, said the setbacks will be eighty seven to eighty eight feet in Phase One A. And then the minutes say, and varies from one thirty three feet to eighty seven feet. And did you need in Phase One B?
Phase One B, yes.
So we'll just add in Phase One B. I just wasn't sure of that and I didn't I didn't go into the plan to see. Okay, so we'll just add in Phase One B. Okay, then, um, on the next page, the speaker is the former president of the Linden Chambers. And does anybody know what that organization is called? Is it called Residence Association? Should we insert Residence Association? Oh.
From the guy in the corner.
So for the record, we, uh, for clarity, we recognize, uh, the president of Needham Housing Authority, Reg Foster.
I think you're recognizing, you know, you're recognizing his thumb in that kiss.
And the the proper title of the organization is Linden Chambers Residence Association and and we will present it that way. Okay, um, then there's just one more. On page five, um, Morris Singer, who was a neighbor, who was commenting on the plans, um, said three thirty six is the current number of units. And I think that he's speaking of the entire development, Linden and Chambers.
Yes.
No, the numbers seem off perhaps, but this is what he apparently said. It was taken. There three thirty six is the current number of units, which is a hundred and twenty eight percent increase in that site. It's just not clear. Um, he said, he said in prior sentence, the density going from one fifty two to two forty seven units and that that is what we're talking about is a one hundred and sixty three percent change in density. I think the the math is, doesn't one say sixty three percent?
That's what he said.
That's what he said, let's keep it. Should we rewrite the second sentence because?
Yeah, we'll win the three thirty six.
I know, I do.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know either. That's fine.
Yeah, it's not clear. Um, so we'll just take it up. And I think his 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 important point is the one that he left in, the increase in density. Okay.
Three thirty six, three thirty six isn't related to the total number of four of the housing units in the Needham Housing Authority, is it?
No.
It is. It is. Okay.
Full star.
The total of the total of. In the town. Oh, I. I see.
Do you want to correct this then?
That still doesn't make the sentence.
Well, it depends what he says. I mean, that's what he said. He's saying a hundred and twenty eight percent increase on that site. He may be thinking that he that, you know.
Oh, that that's a twenty eight.
Yeah.
I don't know. I tried to get my husband to mention this. He's a professor, you know. I did say the first one sixty three percent, not a hundred and sixty three. And on the second one, if if this is what he was saying, thirty six is three thirty six is the current number total housing of thirty units in town. So this is a hundred and a twenty eight percent increase.
Of the total stock.
Of the total.
I know, it's referring to the of the hundred. It's an increase in the density at the site.
But that's.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I know that we accept the um, minutes of December sixth, two thousand and twenty three as redlined um, with the freshies made tonight.
We have a motion by, uh, Gina, second by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Uh, Lee, do you have any reports?
Uh, I just wanted to bring up two things. We have added an extra home meeting, um, off of our normal schedule. Um, we're holding it next Thursday. The purpose of the meeting actually is two days from now.
No, this Thursday.
Yeah, this Thursday. Two days because we were having our extra meeting. We're meeting again next week. Um, to finalize the two scenarios. Um, the there was some tinkering that has to happen on the first scenario because there was a miscalculation, um, and we came up short a number of of units and so we're going to make some adjustments. And the calculations off of the the committee's input on the second scenario came back. And so we're going to ask them to review those calculations and to finalize them. I also invited Chris He to come in, um, to talk to the committee about, um, what site plan approval is going to look like under the MBTA Communities Act, what kind of discretion the planning board is going to have. So as the committee, if they can make the decisions on the second scenario, they can make decisions around how they want to process that. They want to give that the same kinds of as of right, um, categories that the base plan has and have a process that way. Or if they want more process, I think it's a function of what they hear from, uh, town council. So that's scheduled for this.
Sorry, okay, can I just want to get a little clarity on that. Are you saying that site plan review for compliance under the first model?
No, for MBTA communities, just period. MBTA communities.
Regardless of its scenario.
MBTA communities requires you to do it as of right.
I understand that.
So what 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 does MBTA communities require for site plan review for as of right versus site plan review for a normal?
Special permit.
Well, well, that too, but we have a we have site plan review right now for projects.
Yes.
What does MBTA require for site plan review for MBTA? What's their what's what's their definition? And then, and you know, and then special permit, there's a site plan review that we already have.
Right, I I think I understand that. I wasn't sure if you were making a distinction between the first model and the second.
No, no, I'm making I'm making a distinction on what does the MBTA Communities Act require?
Which on the first model, we have to accept. But on the second model, there's a choice when you're if you're adding density beyond the base.
Yes.
Whether or not you want to process that is the same kinds of rules MBTA community has or are existing rules. Um, depending upon the difference of discretion you have under those two standards.
Right.
Yep.
So that's going to affect the first conversation. The community is going to be so the committee members, I think, all understand the rules and the parameters, and then we're going to review those two models and hopefully finalize them. And I want to thank everybody for your flexibility on the solar, um, showing that we have switched the the fourteen, I think, had this open a minute ago.
Yep.
So.
But I want to talk about that because we're having a meeting on the fourteenth. And two of you aren't going to be here. Gene's not going to be here and Natasha's not going to be there. So they're going to have to review the tape in order to participate in the final vote on the article. So we do that on the nineteenth.
So we're meeting on the fourteenth at seven P M.
The fourteenth and the nineteenth. I I thought we could have done it on the fifteenth, but that was have been dependent upon everybody being available on the fourteenth.
Yeah, because it it might might have been possible immediately. The fourteenth and the nineteenth, there shouldn't be a problem.
Right. So just so I'm clear, are we canceling the fifteenth? Because I'll cancel that. Yeah, on calendars. Okay.
Oh, we'll cancel on the fifteenth.
Right. I don't see any reason. Perfect, because the fourteenth is the hearing. And then if we were able to deliver it on the fifteenth, we would have. It could be more time. Because I if we don't get it done on the nineteenth, for some reason, we heard a lot of testimony. There's a lot of tinkering. We can't finish it on the nineteenth. And this article is going to get switched to the special.
Oh.
And I I really don't want to do that, so I'm hoping that that's not going to happen.
So the fifteenth is moved to the nineteenth?
No, it's moved to the fourteenth.
No, we we.
The nineteenth is our regular meeting.
The nineteenth is. The nineteenth is a Tuesday. I we have it on my calendar. I don't know why. All right. The nineteenth is the regular meeting. The the we were going to meet on the fifteenth, but that didn't work out, so we're meeting on the fourteenth.
Right.
For the solar, but Gene, you and I won't be there, so we need to watch the tape.
Yeah.
Like a football game. And just heads up, um, Natasha, you're chairing the meeting of the nineteenth. Okay.
So, uh, because Adam is going to be on.
Can you imagine the first vacation three years?
How dare you?
I know. I know. Can you imagine all the things, all the wrongs I've done?
Yep.
Um, I will. So I'm three hours, I think I'm three hours behind. So it's like four o'clock for me, so depending if and I'm with my family and an extended family.
Adam, it's okay. You can take a vacation.
So you're on the west coast.
Almost, not quite.
Yeah, but you're you're on the southern times.
Yeah, I think. So that's what I think, but I, uh, all right, so that leaves us to our court. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Natasha or Gene, did you want to, Artie, Paul?
We'll have more to report after Thursday's meeting. This Thursday, this Thursday.
How quickly you forgot.
So I, um, uh, I'll note for the record, we've received a phone correspondence um, an email dated January twenty nine from, uh, Dennis, uh, Monagro regarding, this is about MBTA. Regarding his lack of awareness regarding the town's effort to ensure compliance with the state's MBTA Communities Law. And then in addition, we received by email dated February twenty second from William Lenahan of one eighty nine Hoyden Street, objecting to any rezoning that increases residential density as a result of the uh, compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. Um, so that is for for the record. I I will say, uh, who else?
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, sorry, I, you know, I would like all of our, I'd just like to remind our colleagues to maintain the quorum in these in these meetings and not to raise our voices. You know, and anyone to recognize the people that, you know, did perhaps want to speak beforehand, that's all. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing that, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. We have adjourned the meeting. Thank you.